Good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, November 20th, 2018. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order. Before we take care of any of our other business tonight, do you want to recognize that we lost two special people from our community since we last met as a council here in this room? If you would please join all of us sharing a moment of silence for Elena Houseley and also Dottie Ramos, who passed this week. So if you please join us in a moment of silence. Now, we'll move on to our business. We'll start with roll call, please.
Councilmember Durham.
Here.
Councilmember Dorman.
Here.
Councilmember Moller.
Here.
Vice Mayor Doranbecker.
Here.
Mayor Dunbar.
Here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is the adoption of our agenda tonight. If there's no discussion, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved. Second.
And I'm letting Michelle go through that. All in favor?
Aye.
Please cast your vote, so we can get in the habit.
Jeff, are you a yes?
We'll count you, Councilmember Durham.
Got it. There we go.
Okay, moving on to public comment. Is there any public comment that anyone would like to share with the council that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay, you're all here for something. Very good. We'll move on to our consent calendar. We do have some corrections to items 6A, 6B, and 6D, as identified by the town clerk. Was there anything you wanted to say about those items?
Yes, for item number 6A, ordinance number 18-478, recital C had language added that says "and shall report such to the town council." Item number, Consent Calendar 6B, Resolution Recital C changed $10.50 to $11, and then Consent Calendar, item 6D, the minutes, minutes from the November 6 meeting, we also reflected for item 8B that the same wording for the ordinance, "and shall report such to the town council."
Thank you.
Consistency, thank you.
And I also understand Councilmember Dorman would like item 6B pulled for discussion. So, is that still?
Yes, thank you.
So, is there a motion to accept the corrected 6A, C, and D as presented, as corrected?
So moved.
If you, if we can hit those buttons.
Yours didn't work, Jeff, so I'm going to reset. Can you go ahead and start again, Carrie?
I don't have a motion button up yet.
All right, let's do a verbal.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that's unanimously passed. Item 6B, Councilmember Dorman, your questions or comments?
Yes, thank you. So, I just wanted to clarify, this is actually an increase for most of our part-time employees, not just minimum wage increase. Is that correct?
So, is that, that's a Gary question, I think, for right now, unless it's Samantha from the back?
I think it may be Samantha.
I can do either.
Go ahead.
So, with the increase of minimum wage, our Step A in several of our positions goes up, and with that, the rest of the scale will move up as well. And also, those positions that have a entry level, so there's two positions that are, there's two positions that are a step, are a position 1 and a position 2, so that scale would then bump up to the next position as well. Does that clarify it?
Well, so, let's take, for example, excuse me, Recreation Specialist. I got the table of effective, the part-time salary is effective now, it's $17 an hour, and it looked to me like the proposed for starting 119 is $18 an hour. Is that correct? Did I read that correctly?
Yes.
And so, that happened all the way down the line on A, and it happened all the way down the line on E. I didn't check B, C, and D, I just wanted to get a framework. So, it looks like it's just simply a raise for part-time employees.
It could, I guess it could be considered that, but when you change Step A, it will consequentially, because there are 5% steps from A, B, C, D, E, will change the entire scale. You can't just change Step A. Regarding the Specialist position, the way that our positions are structured is there's a Rec. Assistant 1, 2, and then a Rec. Specialist. So, the way that those positions are written in their job classifications, the Step E of a Rec. Assistant, which is 1762, it wouldn't be appropriate to start a Rec. Specialist at 17 because of the way those positions are structured in their job classifications.
Yes, so I guess my bottom-line question is, are you recommending that we increase all of these part-time salaries because we need to do that to be competitive into the next year? Because it is, I'm not really following you, I'm sorry, on the steps, because Step A, we are increasing at $1, which is not on Rec. Specialist. That is not required by the minimum wage, because it's already above the minimum wage. So, I'm trying to figure out, are we going up a dollar because we need to do that to be competitive?
So, we are going up a dollar in the positions that start at minimum wage, and so that is by law. So, when they start at 12 or 1250, based on where they were in the scale before, we had to become, we have to become compliant with the state law as of January 1st. There is a ripple-up effect of that because of the way our positions are structured. So, in theory, yes, everyone will be seeing some sort of increase, because you can't just increase Step A in a Rec. Assistant 1 and not think that that's going to carry through the higher positions that fall from that. So, a Rec. Assistant 2 and then a Rec. Specialist.
Okay, so like a building attendant is going from 1450 to 1550?
Right.
And that is because something else has changed, something?
Because the base rate of pay has, the base rate of pay has changed. It's gone from $11 to $12 is the base rate of pay.
So, everyone is floating up because of the minimum wage, is what you, although they are above minimum wage?
Yes.
We still float them up as minimum wage goes up?
That's the suggestion to stay competitive in the labor market, yes.
Okay, so that's my, that was my question. Are we doing this to stay competitive?
It's not mandatory, we could start every position at minimum wage, but we would not have the base of employees to draw from, but of course, that's your prerogative.
Okay, thank you.
But the, the scale stays the same, the difference between one level and the next is going up the exact same amount that is being required by the new state law?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions from council on that? I'll kind of consider that our staff report. Any members of the public have questions or comments about this item, since it was pulled for discussion? I'm looking at the two of you. Okay, up, really?
All I have to say is...
Oh, wait till you get there.
Charlotte Rife. I don't really have anything to say, but I did work for the Minimum Wage Commission, that was my career, and there is no mandatory that you have to go up at all, as long as you're at minimum wage, that's it. Unless you have something in your agreements with your, in your contracts or something like that. That's what the, that's what the law says.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment on that? Okay? And I think just to, either Samantha, if you'd like to respond, or if I could summarize what I think I heard you say is, we have chosen to have this pay scale to be competitive at all of these levels of experience and skill sets, so it would not behoove us to have everyone at the minimum wage level of $11, now $12, we would not be able to hire anybody.
That's, I think it would be very difficult, and I just also wanted to point out, I believe we're in year three of this annual increase, and what we've proposed this year is the exact same model that we've proposed the last two years, with the exception of changes to the pool positions, which I outlined in the staff report.
And we already couldn't...
So, this model is current.
We already couldn't open our community pool for weeks because we couldn't find lifeguards at the rate they were getting, correct?
That is part of the problem, yes. So, we're competing for a small pool of employees, and when we're competing with the majority of them having to travel 10 miles up the highway or find a way to get here, if we're not competitive with the cities around us, we're not going to be able to fill those positions. This is part of the problem.
Okay.
Not the whole problem, but contributes to the problem.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council? Is there an action to be had on this item? Somebody would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, we adopt Resolution 18-3522 approving revised part-time salary schedule implementing increased minimum wage requirements effective January 1st, 2019.
I'll second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. I don't think there's any further discussion. All in favor? Please. It did come up. You can vote online, and it passes unanimously. Thank you. Yes.
I would be an aye, but I did not vote on that.
Okay, so...
I didn't punch any buttons.
But you are, that, it reflects your vote?
I am an aye, but I did not...
Did you not have a button?
I had no button.
That's why, that's why they didn't produce anything else, so I selected a four.
So, the vote is unanimous to support as presented. Okay. And, and Michelle, just for your information, I was frozen out of that until the vote popped up, so there was a little bit of a glitch there. Okay, we're going to move on to our public safety presentations. First, we're going to welcome Cal Fire's presentation. It's always tough to go first, because then Sergeant Holman gets to respond.
It's actually quite easier, because Sergeant Holman is always such a good presenter, at least I don't have to worry about falling behind him.
There you go.
So, good evening, Mayor Dunbar, members of the council, Jeff Bellier, Assistant Chief with the Napa County Fire Department, and this is our third quarter report for the town of Yountville. If you can go to the next slide, please. So, if you look at the pie chart on the left, you'll see a total number of calls for service within the third quarter, totaled 486 calls. You see it broken down, a little over 200, about 248 are directly calls for service at the Veterans Home. About 105 calls are calls within the city, or the town limits of Yountville, 127 in the outlying areas of the county, and then six calls into the city of Napa for auto aid or mutual aid. Typically, those are for structure fires or large responses. If you look at the pie chart on the lower right, you'll see that the calls are relatively consistent with the five-year average. Town, or the Veterans Home was slightly up, as well as the town of Yountville. Next slide, please. So, the calls are broken down by a call type, as you can see, and this is a national, national trend, the majority of calls, about 78%, or national average of about 80%, are directly tied to providing emergency medical services. And then it breaks down to public assists, traffic collisions, structure fires, fire alarms, and vegetation fires, which thankfully, in that quarter, we, third quarter, we did not have any vegetation fires within the town of Yountville, which is always a good thing. Next slide, please. So, then we put some of our training and so forth into photos, so, as you all know, the Yountville station is very, very active in their training, whether it be training for vegetation fires or specialized rescue. We do house the rescue for the county's technical rescue team here at Yountville Station. Next slide. Just some more of the advanced training we did, which was a high-angle rescue technician, where our folks are actually rappelling and doing things for those very technical rescues that we get very infrequently, however, we have a large risk when we do those, because those are something that we don't do all the time. Next slide, please. Significant incident was CO, carbon dioxide tanker rollover on Dry Creek Road. You see a couple pictures. Fortunately, carbon dioxide is really a benign gas, so there wasn't much of a hazard to the community, but it was significant in just the fact that it was a large vehicle, roadway was closed for an extended period of time. Next slide, please. Some of our other activities, obviously, we're participating in the town's 4th of July activities. As you can see, getting the ladder truck up, flying the American flag, and supporting the town that way. Also, not on the slides, but also, we did participate in a career development day with the local school, so the firefighters went out to the station and, excuse me, to the school and talked to folks that are interested in pursuing fire service as a career. Next slide. And that's it. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Are there any questions? No?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sergeant Holman with the Sheriff's Quarterly Report, with props.
I love the presentation. That's with the pie chart and everything, I'm going to have to step up my game. I'm John Holman, Napa County Sheriff's Office, here in Yountville. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, if you don't mind, go ahead and go into the next slide for me. So, we had 1,125 calls for service this last quarter, and the quarter that we're currently talking about is July, July, August, September. So, that was a little bit up from the prior quarter, and from this year, and then from the same quarter last year, a little busier, and we'll see that in some of the statistics. Not uncommon around the country, especially in California, typically because of, we've got a lot going on, and then anytime you have higher heat in the months, the summer months, we tend to get a little busier, so that's not abnormal. We did 74 written investigative reports and made 11 arrests. If we can get the next slide. Okay, so crimes against persons did go up. It was down from the same quarter last year, but it was up from last quarter. Again, pretty common, and I think I said this last year, it just, it is, when it gets hot, people are out and about, sometimes they drink more, sometimes they're more agitated, and we just see that trend kind of go up and down depending on weather. It's not totally uncommon. We did have one rape investigation, just to kind of say investigation, and one domestic violence, which we've actually, our trend has been very low on both of those, which is good. I already talked about the summer months. Crimes against property, we had an increase in, we had a couple vandalisms, two more than we did this time last year, and again, that kind of comes and goes. Increase in thefts, we have been working with Nextdoor, we've been putting out in the newsletter, and we're going to really have a push here in this next couple of months with Coffee with the Cops and meeting with different people, again, with the whole thing of looking out for your neighbors, looking out for your safe, or I'm sorry, for yourself. If you see something, say something, and locking your, it's simple, I mean legitimately, if you close your garage door when you're not there, if you lock your car, some simple things, it really helps, because it just hardens the target a little bit. But we did see an uptick in that, in the crimes against property. I'm sure most of you are aware about the mail thefts we were having, we had a spree of them going through, and really happy to say that we did get fingerprints by taking the time and going through and doing the mailboxes and the cars and anything that was affected or touched. We identified suspects, we did go and get warrants, and we hunted, it sounds bad, but we hunted down the people that were responsible and arrested them, and they're currently awaiting court, so that's good. Big shock, it was not the first jurisdiction that they were going to be pending mail thefts, but they're going to stay with Napa County for a little while, so I was happy about that. If you don't mind, go ahead, because I'm going to be showing something here in just a second. Traffic collisions were low, which is fantastic. We made 194 traffic stops. Our traffic citations went down from, which is typically 32 to 34%, down to about 25%, and that will be adjusted this quarter, we can guarantee that. If you don't mind, give me the next slide. We participated in several different things throughout the quarter, but the main ones were the 4th of July fireworks celebration, and then we helped out with the Napa Valley Ride to Defeat ALS, typically just starting out and providing just traffic safety. Next slide. So, this is, just, I wanted to show you guys, this is a stopstick. In the past, for my whole career, we've had, you know, when we're trying to stop cars in pursuits, if we can get ahead of it, or we're able to stage people, we normally use what's called spike strips, and it's almost like a long accordion that has spikes all over it and little plastic covers, and a lot of times, as you're bumping around the back of the car in the case, the plastic covers come off. So, when we open it up, it's, it looks like something from a torture chamber. I mean, it's very dangerous for us. I'm not even happy about using it if we didn't have to, even near the public. Typically, thankfully, the public hears sirens and they stay clear of it.
If you could bring the microphone with you, so we can keep hearing you.
Actually, so, what this has done, this is a new product that we're implementing in all the patrol cars, and we're rolling out. Everybody has been, thanks, Joe. I have, all the Yountville folks have been trained on this.
Yeah, right.
So, he can't, he can't use it, all right. I trust you. Basically, it's the same thing. It has, it has three different sets of titanium hollow spikes in it, there's three cases that hold them, and it goes through foam, and then it's encapsulated in plastic, and it's literally, I don't know if you remember, this might be dating myself, this makes me think of those old fishing poles, you could flip out, and you could fish, you could kind of put it in your backpack, anyway. So, you literally take this, unhook this, and throw it out across the road, and fish it back to where it's straight, and then you wait for the cars to come. The nice thing is, after the target or suspect car hits it, it's very light, it keeps the spikes that didn't go into the tire inside, so you don't have spikes flying around at deputies or officers or public, and it's just substantially safer, so really excited about the new product or new tool. So, that's implemented in our cars, and we're, that, that's fine. We're still actively trying to deal with high-speed pursuits, it's a problem for society. It just is, and it's part of what we deal with. I touched on the safety tip reminder. We are entering the holiday season, a lot of people are going to their favorite online vendor and having a lot of things delivered, so we need to pay attention. One thing that we can pay attention to is just looking at when it's supposed to be delivered, and taking it off our porch, or having a neighbor or someone you trust take it off your porch, because people, there's other people watching too, that we don't want to watch. We want to actually get all our gifts and deliver them to whoever we want to give them to. And if you see something, say something. So, that's my message, and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you very much, Sergeant. Any questions?
Just, thank you.
Have you implemented the new sirens in the vehicles yet, or is that coming? The warning sirens?
So, the high-low alert sirens are in all the vehicles, and everyone's been trained on using them, and we've talked about what they're for, so that's going to be something that I think is, we're going to continue to push out also through some of the neighborhood meetings, because I just think it's important for people to hear it themselves, other than just on a video, and then to talk about what it actually means, so we don't have people thinking that all that means is evacuate, when what it really means is, it's time to check in with our website, it's time to turn on a radio, maybe even time, maybe call us, call dispatch if we needed to, but initially, check the Yountville website, check the sheriff's website, turn on your radio to a local station, just be alert.
And that messaging will continue to come out and explain to folks what it means, and I think with our Subcommittee of Councilmembers, with our emergency preparedness here in Yountville and countywide, that message will continue to get shared with the residents.
Absolutely.
Great.
It will continue to push that out.
Thank you very much, Sergeant.
Absolutely.
We are going to move on now to the first of our two public hearings. Item 8A, Priest Ranch Use Permit Amendment. Nathan, welcome.
Great, how are you?
Good.
Good. So, thank you, Mayor and council. Before this evening is an application for a use permit amendment to the Priest Ranch tasting room. The application is actually part of a program that the town council initially set up about a year ago. Before we get into the details of this particular application, I'd like to just review for the benefit of the council, as well as for the benefit of the audience, the history of this program, and really what this application is and what brought it about. So, if you remember, in, on February 7th of 2017, yes, that long ago, the town council amended the town's parking standards to require off-street parking based on a business's use area, rather than the floor area ratio of the developed space of the total business's use areas. We've seen more and more businesses using outdoor space as part of their business activity, and that's to better approximate the true parking demand of each use. As a part of that agenda item, the town council discussed a program for wine tasting rooms, in particular, those tasting rooms that allow their guests to utilize open space, even though the open space is not designated as use area under their approved use permit. So, then in November of 2017, the town council amended the parking ordinance to allow an increase or decrease in the number of parking spaces by the town council pursuant to an advisory checklist developed by the Planning and Building Director regarding the review and the approval of reduced or increased parking requirements. So, under that direction, the planning and building staff developed this advisory checklist, and then on December 5th, 2017, the town council adopted Resolution 173447. That resolution established that advisory checklist, and it applied to wine tasting rooms that would allow a reduction in the number of required off-street parking spaces. Now, that resolution established this checklist, and it stated that it would take effect when an existing wine tasting room applied for a use permit amendment, and that, especially if that, or only if, that wine tasting room is utilizing their outdoor open space as part of their use area. And what wine tasting rooms would then be able to do is apply for a use permit amendment to allow them to pour wine in this outdoor open space without it resulting in an impact on their parking demand. That would only be approved if certain findings are made. That advisory checklist includes those five required findings. So, in short, under the program, a tasting room would be allowed to extend their service of wine to outdoors only if they meet certain findings. The program is special, because it permits the service without triggering any extra parking requirement, and it also had a deadline in which wine tasting rooms were supposed to apply. Only businesses that can meet the findings are granted this use, and so, the findings are all summarized later in this, as well as in the staff report, and, but for the exact wording, I refer to what the staff report says, it has the exact wording, I'm also going to touch on that, too. But, the findings, in summary, the business needs to be unable to meet the additional parking demand, meaning their parking lot is already striped to capacity, it's full, and if they were required to make any new parking spots, it would just be impossible. Two, guests need to already use the space regularly. It's one thing to say if you have a lawn that nobody's on, that wouldn't apply, it needs to be open space that guests are already using regularly. Three, allowing employees to pour in this outdoor space would not result in any additional staffing, that needs to be a requirement. Fourth, allowing employees to pour outdoors would not negatively affect neighbors. And then, five, allowing employees to pour outdoors would enhance the atmosphere of the area. It would need to do a general good to the community in the area there. And then also, the checklist allow, included a provision for the town council to include any other finding that they feel is necessary for individual applications. All right, so that's the program. Now, let's talk about the specifics of this application. On March 14th, 2018, staff received an application for a use permit amendment from Priest Ranch to allow wine tasting room in their outdoor patio areas, the front patio and this space I'm going to call the interior courtyard. Both are pictured here. The application would result in not applying the town's parking standards to the modified use area, but allowing Priest Ranch employees to pour wine in these two areas to guests. On April 3rd, the town council heard this item and held a lengthy discussion, and included in your staff report is a summary of the discussion held at the meeting. Video of that meeting is also available on the town website for everyone out there who wants to watch it. So, the town council did raise several concerns in that discussion, I want to touch on a few of them here. So, first, the applicant indicated that permitting wine pouring in the front patio and interior courtyard would not result in any additional staffing. They indicated that the most staff to be in the space currently and in the future, even if this was permitted, would be on Saturdays, when they would have five employees. They said that there are three sales associates, one supervisor, and one bar back. The council did express concern that this number of employees would not be sufficient enough for all the seats being proposed. This leads to the second concern that was raised, and that's the number of seats. The applicant's initial submistle, initial submittal requested permission to pour wine to 18 front patio seats and 24 courtyard seats, which is a total of 42 seats. But if you include all the indoor seats, which the applicant stated was approximately 45 seats, then that would be a total of 87 seats for these five employees on Saturdays. And so, staff recommended at the time that the outdoor seat count should be decreased, if this was to be considered, and that should be decreased to no more than 30, and staff recommended maybe eight in the front patio and 22 in the courtyard. And staff recommended maybe eight in the front patio and 22 in the courtyard. The town council voted three to one on to permit wine pouring only in the front patio. And it included that max of eight seats or patrons in that area only. And did not permit wine pouring to occur in the courtyard. Resolution 183471, which is included in the council packet, includes all of these conditions approval that I wrote in the largest font possible on the TV. So hopefully everyone can read that comfortably. First, hang on, sorry. Pretty as pictures are, words say more. The first condition of approval just stated that all other conditions of approval for all press use permits for the site stay in place. The applicant has been in compliance with all these conditions of the use permit. Though there have been some violations and education in the past, no formal code enforcement action has been taken against the property for violating the conditions of the use permit for several years. The second condition of approval there is that the maximum number of seats or patrons served in the front patio space shouldn't exceed eight. And as of a staff inspection a couple of weeks ago, there's seating for seven patrons in the front patio space right now. There's seating for 22 in the interior courtyard space. And so they've already been in compliance with this and they also reduced the number of seats in the courtyard. Staff while they were there also, I saw 43 seats inside. And I know in the applicant's narrative, they mentioned 38. This difference of four or five, not four or five, five is most likely a result of one of two things. Some of the seats may be more ornamental kind of armware look that I'm not sure if they're utilized the same as other seats are. And others are couches and love seats and benches. It's hard to get a definitive number of just how many people can sit there. My count of 43 was as liberal as I could be saying, what is the maximum possible, assuming everyone really, really utilized that space as much as they could. But that might be a reason why the number's off by five. That five number is not totally an outrageous difference between the counts. So we feel like that's consistent. The attached photos in the council packet also show each of these sites and their seats. The third condition of approval back from April said that the applicant should provide a monthly payroll report to ensure that the number of employees does not increase. The applicant has submitted a payroll report every month. They've complied with this. And each of the reports show a consistent number of employees, show no more than five. The only difference was one month when they had a little bit of turnover or a little bit of training occurring. But it's been consistent. There hasn't been an increase of employees. The applicant also should include all employees in the town's employee parking management program and create internal parking management policies. While in May, Priest Ranch did enroll all of the employees in their employee parking management program. They were assigned parking permits for each employee and five spaces were identified in the parking lot as dedicated Priest Ranch parking spaces. The business has been compliant with all of the expectations and requirements of this program. Another condition is that signage would be installed to show that the space would be designated as open space. And in May, a temporary sign was posted on the window indicating that the front patio space is open and available to the public. It is a temporary sign, knowing that they are in the process, they recently received design review approval to do a lot of remodeling in that front space. And it's expected that upon completion of the remodel project, a more permanent sign will be installed to classify this as open space. And then sixth is just a standard condition that's been in place with almost all, with all the other use permits in this program that says that if any conditions of the business change that would affect or alter any of the findings, then the use permit may be revoked. Staff isn't aware of any conditions in the business that has changed that would make this resolution invalid. Then lastly, the council included condition number seven, which said that the applicant could submit another application after several months of operating in the front patio space. And it included this condition saying that if the applicant submits a revised application before October 3rd, then they could, it could be considered again whether service can be permitted in the courtyard. The applicant did meet this deadline and submitted it on September 27th. So that's the history, alright? Now I want to review this application that you have before you tonight now that you, we reviewed all the history of the program and of this property. First, I want to review what they're asking for. To put it simply, they're requesting permission to pour wine in this courtyard space. I call it the interior courtyard in the staff report. Without triggering any additional parking requirements. They're proposing to keep the 22 seats that are in the space right now. Not requesting to increase that or decrease it. They just said 22. They are not asking permission to pour to any additional seats indoors as that's already approved and that's not regulated under any use permit right now. What has changed since April 3rd, really not a lot. No ordinances have been adopted related to this issue. The only conditions that have changed include those on the site that we've gone over. The reduction of seats in the front patio and the courtyard. The wine tasting service now occurs in the front patio as was approved in April. They installed the open space sign, which was a condition of approval in that. And the applicant has, is now participating in the employee parking management program, all conditioned by council. That's really the only difference between today and back in April. Before I get into all of the required findings, while reviewing the film of the previous hearing, there was a lot of discussion about just the total number of seats. So I thought this table would be appropriate to help summarize a little bit of everything. The applicant request on April 3rd showed 42 total outdoor seats. And if you include the 45 indoors, that's a total of 87. It was not part of their request, but the applicant included an indoor seat count of 45. Staff shared concern that the number of seats was too high for the number of employees indicated. Staff recommended reducing the outdoor seats to 30. Town council approved service only in the front with a max of eight patrons or seats. On our recent staff observation as we reviewed, these numbers are the current status. And applicant's current request is pretty darn similar with what the current situation is. Staff, for the application that you have before you, staff's recommendation is that the total number of outdoor seats be set at a max of 30 seats or patrons. And staff recommends that this can be distributed as the applicant sees fit as long as the two spaces, the front patio and the courtyard, don't exceed 30 altogether. If the town council is concerned though that the number of seats indoors may increase as a result of allowing wine pouring in the courtyard, then there's two routes that the council could take. They could add an additional sixth finding that says that the, allowing the service will not increase the number of seats indoors. Alternatively, they can place a cap on the number of total seats. There's a number of different avenues that the council could take and we can explore that when we get to that point. So this brings us now to the required findings. I'm going to try and be brief as we go through those so we can get to council discussion as quick as possible. The first finding says that the business is unable to meet the required parking demand set forth in the municipal code with the addition of the proposed use area expansion. Now, the applicant submitted project narrative states that the Priest Ranch parking lot is shared with their neighbor Protea. There's a total of 15 parking spaces. One handicap, three compact and four designated for Protea and five designated for Priest Ranch as the diagram shows. The parking lot is designed for the densest use of the space. Priest Ranch is unable to add more spaces without negatively impacting the ability to accommodate the range of car makes and models while maintaining a functional and safe parking lot. The applicant doesn't expect this to have a negative impact on the community as they are adding additional seating or any staff members. And it's important to note that Priest Ranch has been participating already in the parking management program since May of 2018. And the designated parking spaces are marked according to the town's requirements. It's staff's, staff is in agreement that yes, the parking spot, the parking lot is filled to capacity. And they satisfy this finding that the business is unable to meet the required parking demand. Note, if they were to extend wine service in the courtyard, they would need to come up to about four more spaces. And staff doesn't see how they could create four more spaces in that parking lot. There is on-street parking on Washington Street in front, but that is open and available for everyone. We aren't dedicating any public spaces on Washington Street to any particular business. Number two, the business's guests need to already use that open space regularly. Staff finds that they are in compliance with this finding that guests are using that courtyard regularly. This is evident also because of past use permits that are attached in the staff report that state that outdoor consumption of alcohol is permitted, but outdoor service in open space is prohibited. Simply because it's there in their use permit and because it can be seen, shows that the applicant, oh, this, it already satisfies this finding. Three, permitting employee service to guests in the outdoor use area would not require any additional staffing. On the April meeting, this was the finding that caused the most discussion among the council. The applicant submitted project narrative stated that, or states today, the narrative for this application states that outdoor service will require no additional staffing. The narrative also included the following. "Our previous presentation confused the council and resulted in several council members not counting managers and supervisors or leads as contributing to service and wine sales. We would like to clarify that all managers and supervisors at the Priest Ranch tasting room are actively working on the floor. We feel the number of employees working daily in our tasting room is in alignment with the number of seats, both indoors and outdoors. And our team can provide the high level of hospitality our guests expect." Now, what the council has done to ensure that this stays the way is usually to create two different conditions of approval. One, requiring the monthly employee reports. It's usually a third-party payroll report that's submitted to planning staff the first week of every month to ensure that the total number of employees has not increased. And the second one is to set caps on the number of seats or patrons that can be served in an area. Staff recommends that if the town council finds this to be consistent with the required finding, that similar conditions be placed on this new resolution. And that's what's before you this evening. The fourth one says that permitting the business staff to use the open space as use area would not negatively affect the noise, lighting, safety or business practices of neighboring properties. Because guests already use that space regularly, both the front patio's already been approved. So because guests already use the courtyard, staff is of the opinion that yes, that finding would be satisfied. And fifth, the use permit amendment would enhance the atmosphere of the streetscape and improve the overall experience for the business. Now permitting service in the patio areas would make the area livelier. While the interior courtyard is not entirely visible from the street, additional activity associated with Priest Ranch is expected to still create a more inviting environment. Even though it's not perfectly visible from all parts of the street, you can feel where, when the courtyard is being used when walking among the sidewalk there. An active streetscape is generally seen as a positive element to most communities. And an active open patio such as the one being considered tonight would definitely contribute to the activity on the streetscape. That can be an argument that you make in order to make this finding consistent. And then lastly, as we mentioned before, town council does have the right reserved to add any other additional finding that they feel might be necessary, that might be specific for this application. Staff isn't necessarily recommending any right now. However, as we discussed, if there is concern about interior seats, then a sixth finding could be used that says that permitting service outdoor won't result in any extra seats indoors. That's an option as well. So I put up here all six findings. I'm happy to refer back to any of those previous slides we've gone over. Any of the photos that are in the council packet, I'm happy to pull up if they are point of discussion. I can also pull up satellite views with Google Maps if we want to get a more clear idea of the space. The conditions of approval in the resolution before you this evening are similar to the ones approved in April. It does talk about the maximum number of seats or patrons to be 30. Kind of up to the applicant, whether how many are in the front patio or how many are in the courtyard. That can be revised if the council so wishes. The requirement that there be a monthly payroll report is still in this resolution as presented. As well as just extra emphasis to that all employees shall continue to be enrolled in the employee parking management program. That permanent signage will be installed concurrent with the remodel project that's going to be shortcoming. And that the conditions of the business, if anything changes, that would affect or alter any of the findings that a use permit may be revoked. But also the town council can add any other conditions that they seem fit. So at that, time's now yours to discuss that and I'm here to answer any questions. The applicant is also here.
Thank you. Before I open the public hearing, are there questions in the staff report? Councilmember Dorman?
Thank you. The resolution as presented for our consideration, how does that fit with the 2012 resolution regarding Thursday Night Live? Would it allow table service in the Thursday Night Live events, the ones that you've presented tonight?
Right. This would be, we could make that more specific if we want to say that tonight it would only apply to normal day-to-day service and that all the restrictions of, not the restrictions, but the permitted activity as part of Thursday Night Live shall be restricted to what is in the Thursday Night Live resolution. Something like that can be added if that's a concern. I believe as it's written now and Gary can confirm if we need, this would then allow table service during Thursday Night Live because it's open during their normal business hours in the courtyard.
While Gary's looking, I'll just ask my second question, which is the 30 seats that staff, outdoor seats that staff is recommending this evening, is the same number that they recommended in April? Is that correct?
That is correct. In April, they requested a larger number. Staff recommended that they decrease it to 30 total, 22 in the courtyard, eight in front.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Durham?
You said several months ago you walked through the property. What was the most recent use permit review on the property?
I walked through the property about two weeks ago, several weeks ago, and that's when I did the count of all of the tables. The last sit-down as part of our annual use permit monitoring program was just about a year ago. So they're likely due for another one in the next month or so. They'll probably be after the holidays when that occurs.
And if I heard you, so all the pilot program has ended? This pilot program ended as of October 31st, correct?
So the initial deadline to participate in this wine tasting program was April 1st. And they submitted at the end of March, we held the hearing at the beginning of April. Town council then extended the deadline for Priest Ranch to October 3rd. They submitted in September 27th. The earliest we could get it on the calendar was tonight.
Thank you. And then there's a lot of talk of open space. So when you're saying open space, regular people walking by can sit, can bring Velo Pizza over and sit on their patio?
Yes, they can. Velo Pizza, the proverbial hot dog, yeah.
Very good. Can you tell me what the retail business is?
They, according to staff observation, staff has seen furniture for sale, clothing for sale, as well as a few art pieces for sale. The applicant might be able to talk more about what their total retail strategy is.
Very good. So...
With the clothing with the Jessup Sellers brand and logo on it.
Priest Ranch.
Yes, sorry. They wouldn't be selling Jessup Sellers.
Not at all. Thank you. So tell me this then, if they're selling furniture, how could? It appears to me that the numbers indoors could fluctuate at any time. Oh, this is just for sale. Oh, this is for use. Is there a designation between all that?
Under their current use permit, it can fluctuate. The town, years ago when the parking standards were set for wine tasting rooms, it was set on a retail base, which is just the square footage of the building. Restaurants are the only ones where we currently manage the number of seats. That has changed in the last year with these several wine tasting rooms because of these new caps saying, thou shalt have this many seats or no more than this many seats. So right now, it can fluctuate within Priest Ranch. There's nothing limiting the number of seats in there.
So therefore, moving forward with this ordinance, we're saying that the indoor seats need to be kept to a certain number. If they're selling furniture, that could be a common issue.
If that's something we want to include. Right now, the staff, the resolution before you doesn't address indoor seats. Right now, the staff, the resolution before you doesn't address indoor seats, but it could be if the council wants it to.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mueller, questions?
Yes, I have a couple questions, I believe, for Gary. So, just a clarification, we started this as a pilot program. They're still under that pilot program provisions because of our extensions. So since we have a pilot program, but it's also now called a special program, do all the approvals that we give go with the land? Or do they have some special pilot significance?
Nope. They all run with the land, just like any other use permit. So once approved, as the other approvals under this program, they will run with the land, provided they commence that use and the town council doesn't subsequently revoke the use permit.
Okay, and then to follow up on Councilmember Durham's question, if we do not limit the number of seats and they increase significantly, would we have to, what would be our remedy?
So if they, if I understand the question correctly, if they had more seats than the use permit allowed, the remedy for that is a code violation. The municipal code makes a violation of a condition in a use permit a violation of the code itself. So the remedies would be every other remedy that the town typically has, ranging from administrative enforcement, fines, a payment, straight through to civil enforcement in Superior Court.
All right, thank you.
Was your question, though, specifically about the indoor count that is not as regulated as the outdoor count?
Right, if I, but...
It wouldn't be a violation of the permit if the indoor count is not
Established.
designated specifically, which it currently is not.
Correct.
So if it increased by twenty indoors, they're not in violation. Then they have to prove that they can still serve with up to five employees.
One option would be to regulate the number of seats, so we kind of know.
Correct.
Yeah, Vice Mayor, questions?
No.
So you threw a lot of numbers of seats out and a bunch of iterations of it. So that's where I've got some questions. Do we have any idea, I'll start with retail diversity. Any idea if twenty-five percent of the business is secondary retail?
Based on the staff observation at the last use permit monitoring meeting, they were meeting the twenty-five percent of floor area, partially, well, because of the wide variety of retail offered. The clothing racks interspersed around the area, the furniture, which is, almost every unit is there for sale. Staff did require that a price tag be placed on every table that is for sale, as well as the art pieces and the way we generally assign floor area to wall, to wall space with an art piece is on it, is three feet out from the wall in order to view it. That's what we do with all the other galleries when showing the use area.
Okay. You're recommending a total of thirty seats outdoor, and it could be any combination, but you're suggesting eight in the front that we've already approved, and twenty-two, up to twenty-two in the back courtyard.
That is the current condition, and staff, it's our recommendation that it stays at that, that it does not increase at all.
Do we know what the total seating capacity is of the courtyard?
They could probably fit more than twenty-two. Right now, it's pretty roomy with twenty-two. As they requested twenty-four in April 3rd, they could probably go upwards if you squeeze in.
I'm also talking about Protea. So does Protea not have access to the courtyard seating at all?
Protea itself can't serve alcohol in that space.
Understood.
Guests can, because it's open space.
Okay, so I'm getting a total seats back there. How many people can sit back there, whether they're going to Priest Ranch or Protea? Or the general public that supposedly can go sit back there and... Or pizza.
Have hot dog. There's twenty-two seats for the general public.
Twenty-two seats total, so they want to be able to use the entire courtyard for their business, is what you're saying?
Yes, but there's that condition that it would still be open space. Just as Gerard got approved to pour on their deck, it's their use area, but there's a sign that says it is still open space. So if someone's eating a pizza on the deck, Gerard can't kick them out and saying this is for guests only. It's open space, they have a right to be there. This courtyard would serve the same way.
That becomes an enforcement issue.
Yes, this whole program does have many...
Rear courtyard, and in theory, somebody from Priest Ranch can tell somebody that's sitting there from Protea, this is our courtyard.
If they were to do that, it would be an enforcement issue.
Just like if Protea said that to somebody that was tasting wine, that would be a violation of Protea's uses. Access to that open space.
In the courtyard, yes.
They have, do they have exclusive use of the rooftop, Protea?
Their ABC license is exclusive, but the rooftop is also open space, and they do have a permanent sign indicating it as open space.
So nobody from Priest Ranch can go up to the rooftop above Protea for wine tasting?
No. That would be a violation of their use permit and their ABC permit.
Then this gets tricky when you say, so if somebody from Protea has a beer or a glass of wine from Protea, and they go sit back in the courtyard, then you have a crossing of two ABC licenses. How is that supposed to be managed?
It's managed right now because, and that does become an ABC issue, there's that requirement of line of sight. And so if Protea observes one of their guests violating their ABC permit by consuming alcohol outside the permitted area, that's the responsibility of Protea to get that fixed. If ABC becomes aware of it, Protea would get fined or penalized, whatever their process is.
Okay. So you don't consider, so finding four, it might be helpful if you left those up like you had earlier. Finding four, the last part of the business practices of neighboring properties. How about business practices of shared property? It sounds like we're talking about a potential conflict that may already exist or may be exacerbated with the shared use of the patio and shared use of the front seating areas. Do we have a history of there being conflict or not?
We haven't received any reports of it. Priest Ranch guests, when wanting to use that space, currently are consuming alcohol in the courtyard. They just have to stand up and then go into Priest Ranch in order to get a refill. And so what this finding is getting at is if now employees are pouring directly in the courtyard rather than asking customers to get up and get a refill in place, would that alteration negatively affect a neighboring property or a neighboring business on the same property?
And same goes with the front courtyard or front seating area.
Yeah.
Priest Ranch doesn't have exclusivity to that. If somebody spills over from Protea, that's okay.
Correct.
Or from off-property altogether.
Yeah, from a pizza place.
So...
And that's already been permitted.
And I'm trying to still make sure I understand all of your numbers with all of these iterations of inside, outside, front courtyard, or front patio, interior courtyard. You're saying that the applicant agrees with your thirty total outside?
That's what the current status is. They're not requesting any additional seats, other than what's there right now. They're seating for seven in the front. The town council has already placed a cap on eight in the front, so they're already compliant with that. There's seating for twenty-two in the courtyard. Twenty-two plus eight is thirty, which is why staff included that recommended cap of keep it as it is, don't increase it. But alternatively, the council may request in decreasing that count even more. That's within your right to consider that.
Right. So, just so I think I understand this, I was opposed to the full service in the, in the interior courtyard when this came back before us, based on my inability to believe that the employee count could serve all those seats. And I'm not seeing that anything is different here. Is that, is that correct?
Correct. The only things that have changed are complying with the conditions set in the April resolution. They're still requesting service in the interior courtyard, and they've just reduced their requested seat number, twenty-two, to be the same number that staff recommended they reduce it to last, last April, before they requested twenty-four seats in the courtyard. Staff recommended that it bring down to twenty-two, which they have done.
Okay, and so the...
Are the only changes.
The, the most kind of wiggle room, I'll call it, would be indoor seating. If there is a concern about up to five employees, and we're talking about seventy-three seats, or we don't even know, because we don't have a limit on indoor right now, right? There could be fifty or sixty indoor seats potentially, in theory.
The applicant in their narrative states that they have a maximum occupancy of forty-five. That's not a condition imposed by the Planning and Building Department, but it, from what they've sent, they, April 3rd had a request of forty-five.
And we'll take them for their word. That would be the max that they would ever want to do. So that's still seventy-five total seats being served, full service indoor, outdoor patio, front patio, courtyard, all that.
Yeah.
Okay. And the parking is in compliance, in your opinion?
Yes.
So what's necessary for Protea, what's necessary for Priest Ranch, for the apartment? And then there are three spaces left for the general public, is that right?
According to this diagram, there are three standard spaces and one ADA space, so four total.
And that's adequate.
It satisfies all of the parking demands set forth in previous use permits. I say that because this program includes that first finding that says if you extend the use area, the parking demand won't go up, or they won't be required to provide any additional parking. But right now, they're not in violation of any condition of their use permit.
And I'm trying to frantically look here. There was some reference to the parking management plan. Is there, so there's no concern about needing to have any off-site parking requirements to take employees off of the site to allow for more public parking?
Staff has not raised any of those right now, but that can be discussed among the council this evening.
But they're not in violation right now?
There's zero violation right now.
Okay. Vice Mayor, question?
So I just wanted another clarification about the seats. So if the, right now, Priest Ranch has only seven in the front, where they're allowed to have eight. But in the back, are, I, are we saying that they cannot have twenty-three? Are we saying that they have thirty total? So are we, you know, is it that, at that point where we say, well, no, you can't have one extra on the back?
As of right now, with nothing being decided this evening, they could put forty in the courtyard because there's currently zero condition saying how many can go in the courtyard. Staff is recommending that if the council wants to approve service in the courtyard, that there is a total cap of seats outdoors, front patio and courtyard together, of thirty. And whether that be seven and twenty-three or eight and twenty-two is up to the discretion of the applicant.
I'm sorry, you were saying that they, you know, we were confining the front to eight and the, and the back to twenty-two, but...
No more than eight in the front.
I see.
Yeah.
And no more than twenty-three in the back, or?
Right now, they're seating for twenty-two. Well, as of two weeks ago, when I took those pictures.
Okay. Thank you.
Other question, yes. Councilmember Doran?
Thank you, and I apologize. Comments from the mayor and the vice mayor raise two more questions. But for their fitting into this program, to use the space in the interior courtyard, courtyard, Priest Ranch would need four more parking spaces, is that correct?
But for the provisions in this, correct.
So they, so what they're asking in addition to, so part of their asking by being to be in this program is, normally, we would need four more spaces, but we are asking you to forego those spaces because of this program. That's how it's designed to work.
Correct.
Okay. So, and then to the vice mayor's question about if they put forty seats in the courtyard tomorrow, under current use permits, they would not be allowed table service out there, is that correct? They could put forty seats, but no one could walk out and serve those patrons?
Correct, and I say forty willy-nilly.
Right, I'm just using her number. Okay, thank you.
And obviously, we'll invite the applicant to address some of the concerns or questions you've heard us bring up. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and invite the applicant or your representative to come forward and start the conversation. You're welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. Where should we begin, I guess, right? The number of seats indoors is determined by the fire marshal. So when we opened up Priest Ranch, they...
Sorry, just, sorry, just for the record, if you could just identify yourself.
Craig Becker, owner, wine maker, Priest Ranch, Somersden. So when we opened up in 2010, the fire marshal came in and dictated how many seats we could actually have in the location. So that's why it's posted forty-five. It's the number we chose, it's the number that was given to us, and that, there's no plans to change that. Couple of things on the staff report I'd like to emphasize is we do have plans submitted to the building department for our renovations, and we hope to get that back soon, so we're looking forward to doing that in the near future. The relationship with Protea and Priest Ranch actually is not so complicated, it's actually quite nice. The entire area in the lower level is used by Priest Ranch and Protea customers, including the couches out front, including the deli, and it's, we've had no issues. We have to go out and pick up trash once in a while, but as far as we're concerned, it's a beneficial relationship. You're getting people out in front, and now that we can serve out front, we can go say, you know, Councilmember Mueller, would you like to try a glass of wine or, or tasting or whatever you want to do with your sandwich? So it's been really good. And our customers responded really positively to the service out front, as well as our employees who feel like it's not inhibiting their business or their chance to sell. So anyway, it's a much more cohesive relationship in terms of how we use the space with Protea. If somebody does bring a beer to the back patio or to the front patio, an employer from Protea will come out and say, hey, you can't have the beer here, you need to go upstairs. And that's how it works. So it's been really good. Currently, the way our employees are handling the no-service in the back patio is that customers come into the tasting room, we ask them where they like to sit. If they want to go on the back patio, we explain to them, this is what we have to do. You can go out there, but we're going to go meet you at the threshold of our back double doors, and we'll hand you your wine glasses, and then the customer will go and sit down. So our customers are already engaging, the customers in the patio, just not going out there. So really going out and servicing those customers is not going to require any more effort. The council's already approved another similar, whatever this special condition permit is, where there's allowed ninety-nine seats total, forty-nine inside, fifty outside. It's just shared space with Sunnyside Cafe. So very similar, same exact staffing. And I wasn't here in April, I apologize, on a sales trip. But in terms of what we can do and accomplish with the staff we have, we're very confident that there's no issues in terms of having to hire more people. Any questions?
Okay. Any questions to the applicant right now? Councilmember Doran?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Becker. So right now, under your current permit, are, is Priest Ranch allowed to serve wine by the glass or the bottle, or only do tasting?
It's just tastings. And we do serve wine by the bottle, but not necessarily open it for them. People come in and buy wine all the day by the bottle.
And do they open it and drink it on your premises?
They're allowed in the open space outside, too. They are. It's open space, they're allowed to open the wine.
So on your front patio and on your back interior courtyard right now, you will sell a bottle of wine and give people glasses and they can open it and serve themselves?
I believe they're allowed to do that, yes.
Well, I don't know if they're allowed or not, I'm asking, but that's your practice?
It's happened before.
Okay. You do bacon and chocolate pairings. Do you intend to do that out on the back patio, the interior courtyard? However, we're going to call it.
They already do that, just the customer has to come in and get all the material and take it back out.
Okay, and the cheese and charcuterie, is that just sort of on-demand? That's not a specialized pairing?
It is a specialized pairing. It's not, you can't just order cheese and charcuterie.
Okay, and again, that is currently being served on the interior back patio?
Nothing's served on the interior back patio.
Customers get it and they take it out?
That's right.
Sorry, that was not a trick question. I see that, but that was not a trick question. And what do you hope to gain by doing this? Do you hope that you will have forty-five people inside, eight people in the front, and twenty-two people in the back? I mean, what is your end game?
Real simple. People want to know why they can't be served outside, and we tell them we're not allowed to by our use permit at the Towne Yountville. And it seems like it's a, we understand the limitation with service and seats and parking spaces, but in, to sell wine, you have to tell your story, and you have to engage the customer, you have to serve the customer. And ultimately, it's a seamless operation, and like we see in the front right now, it's great. I mean, it's, there's no issues. And when you go sit in the back patio, we're suddenly setting all these terms and conditions to comply with our use permit that we see as a barrier to business, a barrier to providing a luxury experience that we're known for.
And about how long is an average length of time your customer stays?
Thirty minutes to two hours. Thirty minutes to two hours. Just depends. Now that Red is closed, it's a little shorter. We used to get a lot of business before service at Red.
And that must be people buying bottles of wine?
No, come in for tastings.
Tasting, okay. Do you do any tastings upstairs?
No, it's not permitted. Those are offices.
How about, uh, I know you have that really nice room in the back, right off the courtyard, do you have other sort of private rooms on the property?
We don't, just that one. And that's how we access the back patio, that's where we meet the customers at the door.
And you mentioned, uh, did I understand you correctly, you have submitted plans for the remodel?
Yeah, we're waiting to get them back.
Do you have any ETA on when you will get those?
We're waiting on the Towne Yonville.
And when, let's say the town approves the plans tomorrow, when do you plan to start construction?
Far in any weather, we have the door at the winery, so we're ready to go.
You have a what?
The big nano door, the three-panel door is ready to go.
Now, the furniture, do wine tasting patrons sit on the furniture that's for sale?
They do. The furniture that's in the tasting room actually isn't stuff you would take and ship. It's a partnership with Kiko Sticos in, uh, Santa Rosa, so it's...
So like the big sofas and the armchairs, those are all for sale?
They get an idea what's available, yes, through our partnership in, in, uh, Santa Rosa.
Okay, that, uh, I appreciate it, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Muller, I'll, uh, go to you next.
First, I have to thank Councilmember Doran for checking, checking off a whole lot of questions I had. The last one, I, I, I do want to talk about the retail diversity a bit. Can you give me some idea in the last, you know, five years, how many couches and chairs you've sold?
Uh, the couches, it's less than a year old, so that's not something we've done for five years.
Okay, so that is...
A lot, a lot of the merchandise that we had on our walls has sold in the last six months, so we're reordering that and bringing that back. I mean, it's definitely, we sell quite a bit of merchandise, not necessarily couches and chairs, but it's, it's part of it. And the area that's got the biggest couch and chairs isn't even included in our retail floor plan, cause it's a private room. The one that Councilmember Doran was talking about.
So when people are interested, it's kind of like a furniture showroom, really?
It's more of a merchandise showroom that has furniture that's for sale.
Okay.
So we have handmade, um, shaving devices, there's some knives in there, there's watches, there's all kinds of stuff.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Durham?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I'm good.
Okay, so, um, what is your, what is your opinion about, um, uh, I shouldn't ask it that way, you'll probably say, I don't like it. Minimizing the capacity indoors. Uh, we talked about forty-five is your stated capacity, that's really based on how many people you can have in the building that can get out safely in an emergency. It's not about how many people can sit down and participate in the business. Uh, so, um, if the council is saying, we're comfortable with the eight in front and the twenty-two that staff's recommending outside only because we're talking about capping the inside, what are your thoughts about? I know you want as many as you can have and have the flexibility, but, um, how big a deal is that to you?
Uh, I'd say going lower than forty-five would be a big deal, especially because of seasonality. You know, you only get the outdoor space in the good weather. If you've been to the tasting room, you realize we couldn't put another chair in there if we had to. And I think we have forty-three or forty-four seats right now.
Well, your capacity certainly changed when the big bar in the middle, I think, came out, it probably gave you quite a few more seats to divide up.
Eighteen seats at the bar, so. And now you're putting couches and chairs and tables, it actually takes up more space.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not trying to be, uh, you know, positive or negative about that, I just changed the configuration from the very beginning. Okay, I don't think I have any other questions for you at this time, we'll just see if any others come up. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to comment on this application? Seeing no one else come forward, any last chance for the council to ask, uh, Mr., uh, Becker, any questions?
I have a staff question.
Yeah, could staff just clarify one thing?
Yes.
Yeah, a building permit application was submitted on November ninth for the remodel, and it is currently, um, being in the plan check stages by our consultant, Interwest. Just so everyone's aware of that.
Okay, and is there any estimate on, uh, early December? Hard to say?
It's hard to say.
Okay. Councilmember Muller, you got a question of staff?
Uh, of staff?
Oh, let me do this first, uh, close the public hearing, since this, well, before we close the public hearing. Last chance, Mr. Becker.
So to, to clarify that Thursday Night Live, that's the only night between six-thirty and nine that we're allowed to sell wine by the bottle and the glass. Other than that, it's not allowed. I think you asked that question earlier.
But you just said you sell it to your guests if they request it, is that correct?
People come in and buy bottles all the time.
Right. So they're allowed to do it on Thursday Night Live as well?
They're allowed to do it on Thursday Night Live by the glass and the bottle.
But they can do it anytime by the bottle, correct? So, and, and I'm just trying to clarify, if a guest can come in and buy a bottle at any time, which they can do at any of the tasting rooms, then for Thursday Night Live, the only change is they can get something by the glass, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Very good, thank you, I just wanted to clarify.
Well, there have been by-the-glass sales, Craig, there have been by-the-glass sales during Thursday Night Live, though. Yeah, so, that's not the difference.
No, but Councilmember was asking, was, was it, if we sell by the glass and the bottle, and it's like, no, other than Thursday Night Live, there's no by the, no by-the-glass sales at all?
Right, o- other than during Thursday Night Live, I, I thought, I was hearing you say it the opposite direction, okay, got it. Right, thank you. Yeah, Vice Mayor question? Uh, I have, I am closing the public hearing, so question of staff?
No, I've lost it, oh. Oh, um, this is a question for Nathan. Nathan, the submitted, the plans submitted, uh, for the renovation of the interior, do they allow for more seating, or does it not impact seating?
No, the, the remodel project is just front facade look, like windows and doors and fixtures.
Ground and ground cover, I think.
Yes, all, all of that, yeah.
Almost, almost entirely, if not entirely, exterior?
Yes.
Yeah. Is that it?
Okay.
Okay, uh, further discussion, anyone like to begin, or Councilmember Muller? You still have a question?
I still have a question for staff. So this, uh, the special room in the back, that's got the knives and watches and everything, what percent of retail is that of the total?
I can't give you a specific on that, if we're talking...
Ballpark, I'm fine.
Yeah, I, ballparker, I can't even give you that. Because they have such a wide range of retail in the whole space, it would probably just be one small component. The majority of their retail talking square footage of space is the furniture, simply because furniture is larger. But what component of their retail is art versus clothing versus furniture versus the knives and stuff? I can't even hazard a guess.
Hold on just a second, I'm gonna reopen the public hearing to allow the applicant to answer the question, and then I'm clo- closing the public hearing again, unless you have another question that might need to be addressed to the applicant, so...
I just have another staff question.
Okay, so, Craig, can you help out with that question?
Councilmember Muller, that area is not included in the retail section? I'm not exactly sure why, but, um, because there's closed doors, it could be closed for a conference or whatever, it's not included. So everything outside that is considered the retail area, not in that particular area. So when we actually go through and do our inspection, that area is grayed out, even though we have merchandise in there.
And the question is, are you achieving a twenty-five percent secondary diversity retail diversity?
We haven't changed it since last year, since our meeting with Nathan.
And it was verified by staff?
And if you included that room, it'd be much higher.
Okay, thank you. Closing it up again, not to be reopened, Councilmember Muller, other questions of staff?
So, um, this retail diversity with primarily the couches and chairs, and what I understand is what is the major factor that contributes to twenty-five percent. That was just implemented last year, even though they've been open quite a few years?
They've been open quite a few years, and has all, have kind of changed the different retail, um, strategies that they've had. Um, I believe they've always had a furniture aspect of it, but this current retailer they're using was implemented this year.
Okay.
The current Santa Rosa outfit.
Right, thanks.
There's always been artwork on the walls and around the floor, there've always been miscellaneous kind of lifestyle items for sale, and they've just changed on what products they're selling.
Yeah.
And they've added furniture, basically. Okay. Any other questions of staff before we continue to deliberate? Yes, Councilmember Doran?
Um, so I'm looking at the two thousand and ten use permit. The actual resolution now therefore be resolved, I'm looking at number six. And this is when it was split into building A and B, and I'm believing that building A is Priest Ranch. And it says, the last line on that page, "The sale of wine in a quantity greater than a two fluid ounce pour shall require a use permit amendment." I just, does that go to anything that the applicant was discussing, and this may be a Gary question? Anything that the applicant was discussing about selling a bottle of wine and allowing it to be consumed on-site using Priest Ranch glassware?
So I think it depends on how the council is interpreting serving. It sounds like from the applicant's narrative, that selling a bottle of wine and then what a customer does with it is fundamentally different than serving and showing up and corking and actually handing a bottle or pouring it for them. And I think that's the distinction the applicant's drawing. Defer to, to Nathan on the history of how that particular requirement's enforced.
Well, before that, it says, "The sale of wine in a quantity greater than a two fluid ounce pour shall require a use permit amendment." The sale of wine.
Yeah.
That's where I'm going with it.
Sure, I mean, I, I think I'd interpret that as serving, only because I think their business model clearly is to sell a bottle, so, I mean, taking to its logical conclusion, that would mean they, they couldn't sell a bottle to anyone to take off premises, right? I'm just...
I'm quite certain that meant, uh, consumption on-site.
That's how I would interpret it.
Yeah. Otherwise, why would we allow them to be open at all? Their, their business is to sell their wine.
No, and I get that, that's my que- I'm sorry I'm being artful in it, but my question is, I, what I think I heard was, they will sell a bottle of wine, which I understand, you get your bag, you take it away. But they will also sell a bottle of wine, give you two glasses, and you can uncork it on their patio because it's quote, "open space." So I'm asking, is that allowed under the current use permit that I just read?
I, I think so. And, um, the reason is, I think it says, "The sale in greater than a pour," so a certain two ounce pour, right? So I think that if they were opening the bottle and pouring an entire glass, that would violate that, the way you're reading it.
Thank you.
And that's not the request either, just to be clear, the request is to pour two ounces tableside. Okay, any other questions? Deliberation? Anyone like to begin in the conversation? I'd like to call on Councilmember Durham, cause I never get to, but he's consistently not ready to start.
I started last time.
All right. Councilmember Muller, could I ask you to begin your, uh, discussion, please?
Um, I will comply with that request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, I think the very first thing I'm gonna say is, um, they're confused, I'm confused, we have a lot of resolutions and a lot of detail here, it's, not, to not be able to kind of really make this sen- sense out of this is really difficult. But that said, um, I certainly think, um, I would want to specify the, um, the, the number of seats in the courtyard. I'm still, the, the retail diversity, I'm, um, I, I, I guess that that is approved by your inspections, but, um, I don't, just when I walk by the window, I don't see any price tags hanging off stuff, so I, I'm a little concerned about that and selling the stuff in the, the back room. I, I, I think we really need to probably tighten that up somewhat, that's certainly my sense here. But, um, I definitely think we should be very specific about how many seats are in the courtyard and in the front, and what you can do there. So, um, and also, how many seats we're gonna officially put in this resolution for indoors, so...
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Durham?
Thank you. So, um, just a couple of things I want to clarify, especially on retail diversity, simply because, um, I don't see any, I, I don't understand how retail diversity can go on and not be included in behind closed doors in some room as it is and as it shows in the layout here. I, I don't, I, I can't get my head around the fact that we're requiring wine tasting rooms to have retail diversity, but we're allowing stuff to be going on in the back. So if I look at what's on the floor, I mean, I walked, I walked through the property today, I don't see price tags. And, and we need to be absolutely clear, resolution twenty-seven fifty-five dash oh-nine from March twenty-nine, two thousand and nine, March third, condition number seven on page eight specifically says that we're gonna move beyond art and wine-related merchandise. It's not what I'm seeing in this property. So this is in the resolution that's dated to two thousand and nine. So even if they changed their retail diversity a year ago, what were they doing from two thousand and nine till twelve months ago? So this is, th- this is the confusion that, that, that's out there. And so I, I really believe that, and, and here's my thought, my initial thought was, why are we talking about allowing outdoor seats and allowing outdoor pouring? When in fact, if this condition isn't, hasn't been met, shouldn't it have to be met for a certain amount of time before we allow it and have them come back? That, to me, seems the right steps to do this. It would not be a town council meeting in Yonville if we were not talking about parking, I want to be absolutely clear. And once again, I mean, I, I respect this, I'm sorry, I forgot the term, pilot program. But I, I really think we need to really look at, um, our parking issues, our parking discussion. If this use permit is gonna run with the land, we definitely need to determine, at this point, if we vote on this tonight, the number of seats in each exact location. We are seeing firsthand, once again, because we talk about parking at every single town council meeting, we're seeing firsthand what happens when the use permit runs with the land. Red, Hurley's, to be two perfect examples. So, I, I, I get frustrated, or, because, I mean, I, we, we talk retail diversity, and we're back and forth, and this happened, and then we go back to the resolution. And even resolution twenty-eight seventy-six dash ten from April twentieth, two thousand and ten, condition number five on page five specifically speaks to the retail diversity part, which we have, we have always said, I was not on the council when this first started, but I did get up in front of the council and state that we should allow tasting rooms in this, in this town, and allow them to play out as capitalism would. But at the same time, they need to play by our rules that we set up. And so, to me, this is almost the same thing as our age, sorry. But coming back and asking for forgiveness after these things have already happened, because I really don't see this retail diversity, well, we've been doing it for twelve months, or if it was this way, and the clothing has logos on it, that's wine-related merchandise, there's art on the wall. It states two thousand and nine that we're getting away from art. So, I'm glad you waited for me, my passion could come out more, but it's just, I, I don't see how I even want to allow this to go on. And the council can help me decide that, but I don't see how this should go on until these other requirements from March two thousand and nine were met. So that, that's my thought. So...
Thank you. Councilmember Doran?
To me, this is a rehash of what we saw in April. The seat count that the staff recommended is the same. The number of employees that we said no to is the same. I, I'm not, I'm still open to discussion, but I haven't found anything compelling that would change my mind from my analysis in April. And I really, um, I'm somewhat even more concerned, although I feel better now that the attorney has talked about the sale actually meaning consumption. But I just, um, and the fact that absent this program, they would need four more parking spaces, that's a lot of parking spaces. And we've already, I wasn't on the council, but the council has...
And we've already, I wasn't on the council, but the council has already given one offsite space to Protea. So there already has been a parking issue established for this. The fact that there are spaces in front of the business, I do not find compelling either because that is public parking. And there are other businesses along there besides Protea and Priest Ranch. So I just, at this point, I find nothing compelling to allow the outdoor service, a change of, of what we decided in April. And I think also Councilmember Muller's statement about it runs with the land. So perhaps this business model says we can do it with five employees. But the next tasting room that comes in there and has 75 seats, or ever how many seats, they may have a different business model. I think this is borne out if you just look at one of the tables we got, like more of a Jessup or handwritten. They have a lot more wine educators and staff per customer, and we would have no control over that. So when the next person comes and they have 10 or 12 employees, I think that sets up an issue.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Well, um, I remember when we first talked about the pilot program and we all agreed that the, what we were looking for was to increase the vibrancy of the streetscape. And I certainly believe that Priest Ranch has added to that. And also Protea now. I, I really enjoy seeing that. And though the users permit rides with the property, I think there are a couple of accommodations we can ask for that will set people's minds at ease. For example, adding, um, a condition that adding pouring outside may not increase the number of, of seats inside or outside as a condition might suffice to keep the number of seats as it is. And also, since Priest Ranch does participate in the parking program, perhaps they can work with staff to relocate four employee parking spaces elsewhere and add those four back into the mix for clients. I think that Priest Ranch and the Thursday evening concerts and everything have, have made a very positive impact on Washington Street. And I, I, I can see this working out with a couple of these conditions that we add to keep them in line. And I, I don't know where the, the, um, the doubt about the 25% retail diversity comes from. I mean, they have, I've seen them sell art from the walls and they have all kinds of things to buy. And I just don't quite understand my colleagues' feelings about that. But nonetheless, I think that allowing them to be able to pour tastings in the back garden or in the back patio, whatever you call it, is a fine idea, I really do. And I don't see anything wrong with it.
Thank you. I might surprise you, Mr. Becker, with what I'm gonna say because I was the lone dissenter during our last conversation. I have, I have an idea that might resonate with what I've heard from my colleagues up here regarding the seating. My problem was what I considered an unrealistic ratio of staff to total seats if you were at capacity the last time, which is why I was opposed to the idea. I'm absolutely in favor of, and I refuse to call it a pilot program. I was making a very distinct point. When we talked about this program to allow outdoor service, it was not temporary that we were gonna say, now we're gonna take it back after six months. It was a new program. I wish we'd never used the term pilot in the beginning because I think it connotes temporary and it's not. I think it makes sense. We pride ourselves on a high level of service in Yountville in all levels. So to have to stand in the doorway or invite their guests to come back in, that's not what we want to have to do. But we have issues with parking, we have issues with employee ratios with staff just as much to have a legitimate experience. Having 75 people ultimately with up to, up to five staff, I don't think is a number that can provide legitimately quality service. So I have an idea. I mean, we'll see how, how it flies. But I agree with the Vice Mayor about the retail diversity thing. And I get what Councilmember Durham was pointing out from the 2009. It's one of those things that we want to make sure that there is diversity. We chose to not really narrowly define that diversity. We had some ideas about it not being so one-dimensional that it was just corkscrews and, you know, you know, coasters for pitchers or something like that. And I think most of our tasting rooms have really taken it to heart and have done a very good job of bringing diversity. So I think I would, um, I would, I would say that there is enough diversity in the products. If artwork is on the wall, if it's of a vineyard or of a glass of wine, is that too wine-related? We can, um, you know, have that conversation, I suppose. But I think that does satisfy what we have asked, which is something beyond just selling glassware, corkscrews and things that aren't really that, um, diverse from a retail perspective. So I'm, I'm okay with satisfying the diversity as is. What I'm still uncomfortable with is that total seat count. And you mentioned, I get it, during the winter, you don't want to have only 25 seats inside and you've lost your 22 out in the courtyard and the eight in front. But we could potentially make them seasonal. And we've done this before, especially at restaurants, where they've had courtyard seating areas. And when they open one courtyard, they have to close off a section of the restaurant. We did it at what is now formerly Hurley's. If, not in the restaurant, but they had two courtyards, one in the front, one in the back. They opened the one, they could not open the other. This is a seasonal thing, so if, I'm a little more comfortable looking at the numbers. If you have five staff members, 12 people per staff member, and I'm not in the business, you are. But it seems to me that's a reasonable ratio for wine service to have, that's maybe three or four tables per employee. Not knowing how much you're, you've got your, um, staff that goes in versus a manager type, I'm not gonna split those definitions. But if we were to have 30 maximum indoor seats during the summer months, and we still need to, if this idea works, define that. And then up to 45 inside when it's basically like we're experiencing for the rest of this week. Maybe that's November through February. The four months that are going to be relatively cold, inclement, people aren't gonna want to sit out there anyway. That way, we control a little bit of the parking impact because we're knocking off potentially as many as 15 seats inside. And it's a better ratio staff to patron. So I could live with that type of a formula. It's basically limiting your indoor seats to 30 when you have that courtyard open for up to 22. I agree with the Vice Mayor's comments about the, um, benefit to the streetscape that the seating outside has been. But I also feel it's, it's important for us to allow the businesses to provide the level of service we want you and others to provide. It's why I've supported the other permits as they've come forward. It's also awkward to have some of our tasting rooms now have this ability and then somebody goes to another tasting room that doesn't have the ability. They're like, well, what's, what's your problem? We could get served outside over at wherever. So I can find a way to support this if we bring down the indoor seats when the outdoors being utilized. Because I think that, that solves a couple of other issues. I'd like to hear what the council has, you know, thinks about that idea, if it satisfies the concerns or, or not. Anybody have a comment, response to that or other ideas?
What was your shift in numbers?
I was suggesting 45 indoor to a maximum of 30 from basically March through October. And then November through February, the maximum indoor could go to up to 45, which it currently is because the outdoor seating basically will be unusable. So they're basically losing 30 seats in the winter. So there'd be 45 total in the winter months, more or less. Anyone have any thoughts on that? Councilmember Dorman.
Thank you. So I have a question. Are you saying that we would put in the use permit a condition that you can only have 60 seats? Is that, I, I'm not understanding the, the in and out and the seasonality moving of it. Especially if, and this kind of dovetails to my second question. If furniture is their retail, how do we draw the line between, oh, that's not a seat, that's for sale?
We have done that by saying it's not really seats, it's headcount. We ju- we have done that in, we just did it about a month ago with another business. It's patrons, not seats.
Okay.
RH, for example, has much more seating capacity than they have permitted headcount. So we could say patrons, not seats, and I think that gets us more to where we want to be. And I would be saying, yes, 60 total. And that would be up to 30 inside and up to 30 outside during, you know, March through, and I'm picking March through October, just assuming those are kind of the quality outdoor months. And then November through February, it would drop down to basically 45 inside and zero outside. And of course, there is a, we might want to be less stringent than you can't have 50 on a beautiful December afternoon. But there would only be some level of exception there. I'm not sure if that just makes it grayer for staff to monitor. Maybe we just have to say, you can't serve outside November to February, period.
While, while this is definitely something that we can consider, it does add a level of enforcement. That i- it's possible. But if we go, all the previous use permits, we've said seats slash patrons. If we went with just patrons on this end, in the occasion that they have 50 in, or 45 inside when, during the summer months, when they're only permitted 30 inside, there would be an extra burden of proof necessary in order to do some kind of use permit violation on that. But that's, that's the case with noise ordinances. That's the same case with almost all of them, so.
That's been the case for every tasting room that doesn't have the ability to pour outside. And until we see somebody pouring outside, they get away with it.
That's true.
So I don't see this as anything different. You know, the other option would be make it a hard 60, 30 inside, 30 outside during those months. And then it's 45 maximum, November to February. And if, if it is a beautiful December, January afternoon, they can still buy a bottle and serve themselves. That's when your table service is restricted to indoors. Again, it's, it's, it helps with the parking impacts and the employee to patron headcount. That would maybe allow a little bit of that flexibility. Staff could only still serving, should only still serve inside during the winter. But then somebody could use that as open space and go out, just like they could if they buy a bottle from somewhere else and the courtyard's open, they can take their bottle and serve themselves. So.
So one more thought on that. I, I think it's, either is or is the beginning of a really good compromise, thank you. But now I have a question for the town attorney. Is there a way that this, let's say we achieve this compromise tonight, is there a way that it cannot run with the land? Is there a way that it can be, this is conditioned for this owner, this use? If it changes hands, it comes back to us?
No, not through a use permit.
Could I ask, because a, a couple of councilmembers have brought this issue up. It's very rarely, and I can't even remember an occasion when we've been concerned about the use permit going with the land, whereas we typically concern ourselves only with the existing business. And I'm not sure why that there's, why there is a concern about that in this particular case.
Overall, in this case and others, which the two that I spoke about that have closed and reopened restaurants, the use permit running with the land has not allowed us to make any changes because of the way the use permit was worded.
Unless they come back for modifications, which then opens.
Correct, but.
The opportunity.
As we have seen is happening, that's not happening. So I want to make sure moving forward that we're protecting the future as well as the decisions that we're making for tomorrow. So that's, that's why the discussion's going on. And I do, I, I appreciate the, the compromise to the seating. But I also find it interesting that we're reducing indoor seating during the nice times of the year, which are also the busiest times of the year, when they're naturally gonna have more guests on property overall than they would in November and December. And, but I still appreciate what you're saying, but.
It would be 60 versus 45, but it would be fewer than being requested, yes.
Correct. And, and, and I want to clarify, I don't see a parking impact anywhere. To defer to my other council members, but once again, I don't see a parking impact. I just want to make sure with the use permit, the retail diversity, what we have stated in the past. And I want to be clear, as the Vice Mayor asked, I just, I was referring to 275509. I was just reading the language that is in that resolution. That is one of the conditions for retail diversity at this property. So that's what I'm reading and that's what I want to hold them to and should have been, or should be held to from March 3rd, 2009 until today. So that, so that was the discussion for that.
If, if it's appropriate for the town council, I can provide context on two of those items, if it's appropriate. So first off, with the concern of the use permit running with the property, even if it changes hands, included in this use permit is the requirement that if this activity wants to occur, the business owner needs to enroll all employees in the Employee Parking Management Program. And included in that program is the condition that employees better park where they are assigned to park, and that's not on Washington Street. And so if they are unable to come up with a sufficient amount of parking in that parking lot, they need to get creative working with staff to find a solution that works. That condition is in there and will run with the land because the Employee Parking Management Program runs with the land. So I think that's important to be aware of. Second, when it comes to the retail diversity, absolutely, it's, it's correct. It states in 2009 and in the 2010 permits, it actually calls out art as something that isn't appropriate to count for this business. But it doesn't say they can't sell it. It just doesn't count towards the 25%. Just as whatever products are in a back room locked, staff doesn't consider that either because one of the spirits behind the retail diversity component is that someone should be able to come in from the street and have a retail experience. And if a space is closed off, that's prohibiting them from having a retail experience. That's not saying they can't have retail in there, go for it, you can. It just isn't counted towards the 25% of floor area. Because the bulk of the main room has furniture and furniture is so large, that takes up more than 25% of the floor area. So if you counted the art, if you count, if you don't count the art and you don't count what's in the back room, they still satisfy the 25% based on the previous inspections that staff has completed. For this upcoming one, that's, it's gonna be scheduled where we'll be able to get a good look at the, um, the, the new supplier of the retail. We'll be able to see how they are showing that it is for sale. And we can place conditions on there to make sure it's evident, whether it be the size of the price tag or a catalog that's available. Typically, we like to see every single item that is for sale having a visible price tag on it. Does that address any of the concerns?
I can think of Silver Trident, don't they have it on a sheet that takes care of like a room? Am I not remembering that correctly?
I think they have both. I, I, they do have products with price tags on it. So I, I can go and.
I worry we're getting really far down in the weeds about whether we put a
Totally are, yeah.
two-inch price tag on something or an eight-inch price tag on something.
We are, I'm just saying that staff has methods in place to make sure that every business is compliant with that condition. I, I hope that addresses some of the concerns raised, okay.
Other discussion? Other discussion, because it doesn't sound like we're anywhere quite yet.
So I have a question, and I am not particularly concerned about the retail diversity. But now I do have a question based on the twenty-ten resolution. It says, no less than twenty-five percent of the floor space of the main showrooms, VIP room excluded. Is the VIP room?
That backroom that can.
That fronts on the back patio. So as a condition of approval for this, if we wanted to, could we say twenty-five percent of the floor space of the premises? And not cut, because that room is open. You can walk through to it, you could get in from the outside, you can get in from the inside. I mean, if we're concerned about that, it seems like, make it like the other tasting rooms, and whatever is open, I mean, whatever is your premise, twenty-five percent of it has to be retail. Can we do that through a condition of approval on this?
The council can always add clarifying conditions if they want. Again, going back to the spirit, on the times when it is closed, we want to make sure they still have twenty-five percent of the available space, which is why the VIP rooms are typically excluded. That was the spirit behind that, but that can always be resolved or clarified in tonight's action.
We have other examples, I can think of at least two, where the so-called VIP or private rooms have artwork in them as well. So you're saying that that's not counted toward twenty-five percent?
Correct. They satisfy that in their main part.
Okay. Other discussion? Vice mayor, councilmember Mueller, further discussion?
I just, I think I'm still finding this, that the more we talk about is the overcomplication of everything. I don't know if this is a, might be another legal question for Gary. I mean, there's at least three of these resolutions. I mean, we'd be adding essentially another one that's trying to address and trying to clarify and trying to, you know, recodify. Is there any mechanism for, you know, really kind of sending this back to staff and trying to, you know, make something that's a lot more simpler so that we really could figure out what we're going to enforce and which resolution is from, you know where I'm going.
Yes, is the answer. Staff could include every time a use permit is amended, a completely restated use permit with new conditions. It takes a little more work to go through everything, but it would all be contained in one document. That can also be done on a case-by-case basis. Every time the council amends a use permit and approves a new use, it can impose new conditions, which allows the council to change previous conditions. So even to the extent that the restated conditions are slightly different or expanded upon or modified based on the discussion and direction of the council, those can be included in the new use permit. So in an example like this, you could create an entirely new document that expands on some of these areas that the council is concerned about and clarifies some of the issues that are not quite as clear as they could be.
So I think that's my final thought for tonight, is that this gets sent back for consolidation. I really don't think it's, although I appreciate some of the suggestive, suggestive, suggested things we've talked about here tonight, but this is their business. I want them to come and tell me what they would like to do based on what they've heard. And then the staff could also put some of this together and let's just clean it up. So those are my thoughts.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to go a different direction. I'm going to offer a motion. Because I feel like there is the possibility of clarity and resolution tonight, but we'll find out. Let me find that resolution number. I'm going to make a motion that we approve the use permit amendment, resolution number eighteen dash three five two four for Priest Ranch, sixty-four ninety Washington Street, APN zero three six zero eight two, zero two seven, to permit wine tasting service in the indoor courtyard space with the addition, additional condition that a maximum number of seats inside is capped at forty-five during the months of, what did I say here?
November to February.
November through February. November, November through February. And March through October, maximum of thirty seats inside to allow a total of sixty. And I don't know if you need that to allow the total of sixty, but they already have eight in front, twenty-two in the courtyard. I'm saying we would cap the indoor seats to thirty during March through October and allow forty-five inside and none outside, November to February. In terms of service, if people go out and sit on their own, that's their business. That's not part of my motion. So that's a motion that I need to find a button for. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Is there further discussion on that motion?
Well, sorry, I just want to make sure. So approve back patio pouring. A total of sixty patrons or seats distributed, no more than thirty inside between March and October. So that would leave, this is not your motion, but that would leave thirty outside where they could get table service.
Correct.
March to October.
In the front and the back, yes.
And forty-five, and between November and February, they could go up to forty-five interior seats and have still a cap of sixty seats, so that would be fifteen.
Zero outside.
So take all their outside furniture away?
All their service outside during November through February.
Right, but they could have still.
Seats all still can sit there and people can use them. They just would not be able to give the full table service that they're having inside during those months.
Okay, so, all right, and then, so here is my question on your motion. Let's say it's November first, they have forty-five seats inside. They could still have thirty seats outside. No, because we are capping the seats at sixty, by your motion.
As of November first, it goes from sixty to forty-five total seats. They lose fifteen seats during the winter.
They lose service to fifteen.
Service to fifteen seats, yes.
But they still could sell a bottle of wine, or somebody could come in and say, I will stand in the doorway and get my tasting.
Yes, they cannot have outdoor table service during November through February.
Okay, so.
But they get more, they get more interior table service during November through February.
So November through February, though, they could have, if people were willing to come to the door, they could have seventy-five seats. Or are you, does your motion cap the total seats at sixty, no matter the season?
The way I proposed my motion, there was no seating outside, so it never got above sixty. But I understand what your math is. I mean, I would be open to the total of seventy-five seats as long as the outdoor thirty during November through February did not allow the full table service. I, my problem is seventy-five people are not getting served by up to five.
And right, to me, that's really the beauty of your compromise, is the seats are limited to sixty.
If the council is comfortable with allowing the outdoor seats to remain during November through February, I'm open to that also. I'm just worrying about the ratio and also how this helps with the parking impacts, especially during the inclement months.
Okay.
As stated, my motion is when there are forty-five inside, there's no table service outside. But people could still, I didn't address whether people could still get the current condition, which is come in, get their tasting, and go sit outside. I'm not saying you can't have people sitting outside, just cannot continue that full table service.
So I don't really know the procedure for this, but I would like to, I don't know if I need to make an amended motion or if I need to just offer an amendment to your motion, what you said, but limit the seating at all times and the patrons slash seating at all times to sixty. To make it clear, we are not looking at seventy-five seats during the winter.
So no seating outside during November through February is what you're saying? Up to forty-five inside and zero outside? Or is it sixteen? Fifteen outside?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm fine amending my motion to say a maximum of sixty total patrons at any time of year.
Period.
Yeah, and then with the breakdown that I had about seasonality, up to forty-five of those sixty could be inside November through February. Only up to thirty could be inside March through October.
Okay.
And does it need to be patrons slash seats, staff?
That's how we're inferring that.
But the vice mayor has to also agree to that amendment.
Yeah. Would it help if I summarize it real quick to say what it would say?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay, so adopting the resolution as written, except modifying condition number two, condition number two is the one that just says outdoor seats, patrons to thirty. It'd be modifying that to say that the maximum number of seats or patrons permitted to be served.
I wouldn't say seats or patrons.
Not seats slash patrons?
It just needs to be, it's a headcount, so if it's slash.
The maximum number of patrons?
But if it's slash, seats or leaves it vague. Seats slash patrons means heads.
Patrons or serviceable seats?
Can we just say patrons?
Yeah, we can just say patrons.
I mean, I just don't want it to be nebulous that we say seats or patrons.
Gary?
Yes, you can. Just say patrons.
Yeah, okay. So the maximum number of patrons permitted shall not exceed sixty with no more than thirty indoors from the months of March to October and no more than forty-five indoors from the months of November to February.
Yes. Yeah, so that's, I'm fine with that clarification of my motion, and are you?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, so the secondor also is okay with that? So councilmember Mueller?
Keep in mind, as that is written, that means up to fifteen could be outside, served from November to February. We're comfortable with that, or no?
I think, no, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about only November through February, the full service is only indoor to forty-five.
Got it, so max of sixty, no more than thirty from March to October. Total of forty-five only indoor, November to February, when it comes to service.
Yeah, then those fifteen people outside during November through February cannot be full-served.
Pour themselves, as it is today. And that's going to apply to the courtyard and the front patio.
Correct. Councilmember Mueller, question?
Oh, you think I'm going to ask you one? I might. This might be you, I don't know. Is anything in this motion that has been amended in conflict with anything else in the previous four or five?
What we may need to say is that this replaces the one from April that applied conditions that only applied to the front patio and have this one say, ignore everything from eighteen thirty-four seventy-one. This is the new one that applies to outdoor service for all of outdoors, courtyard and patio. That's the only one I can think of.
So, Mr. Town Attorney?
You're talking about condition one, removing eighteen dash thirty-four seventy-one?
Correct. And we may need to add a condition, and this is the only thing we'd need Gary to say, we may need to add a condition that use permit from eighteen thirty-four seventy-one, some language that say this replaces it, that none of that counts anymore.
Yeah, this contains the standard language in amendments that the town uses. So for example, in condition number one, it incorporates by reference all the previous use permits, and then it says they all apply except as modified in hearing. So what that means is all those other conditions apply unless you're changing them in this resolution.
So eighteen thirty-four seventy-one doesn't conflict if it's just left as is?
And if it does conflict, this supersedes it.
Oh, good.
Councilmember Mueller, does that satisfy your question?
I guess I just don't have time to really kind of, I know that language and I know what it does, but you know, this whole practicality we even heard from, you know, the applicant, this is still confusing. I, would, anything that we're talking about tonight really, it just seems like it's a little bit outside of the scope in my incorrect in that, because this resolution that we have before is, it is quite different in terms of what it says.
So is the question, the conditions that you're considering, are they, do they have a close enough nexus to the use that's being proposed?
Right, right.
I think the answer's yes, because, I mean, it's a number of patrons, they are being served outside versus indoors. I mean, the service outside necessarily affects the service inside, it's all the same operation. So yes, I think there's a nexus between the conditions and what's being approved.
Or proposed, at least.
Or proposed.
Yeah, it just, I mean, there's so many, and I still, that, I think that's my biggest issue, is that we've got a lot of information and a lot of different resolutions. And I think if we have a consensus tonight, what we'd like to see, I definitely would like to hold out and really kind of bring it back and clean it up.
That's your prerogative. We have a motion and a second on the, on the floor, and so we're considering that motion. And if it doesn't pass, then we consider some other option. If it does pass, then that's the direction we're going to go. I think it does provide clarity. I think it's consistent with what we've been trying to do with other outdoor service areas. And I will recognize that I was hesitant to kind of shift my perspective on this, because the track record has not been totally clean, frankly. There's been a lot of turnover and personnel that commit to following the conditions and then they go away. And, you know, so there's been some reason to be a little bit skeptical. But I'm satisfied that we have found consistency and a willingness to comply with all of these conditions. And it is probably a little more complicated than the average one, but I'm okay with that. Other thoughts? I mean, we still have a motion on the floor.
And I'm really sorry, it just seems to me from an enforcement standpoint, we might be better to say seats than patrons, because it's easy to count seats. I don't want to get into the banquet situation, but actual seats. I don't know, and I think the.
But, so my concern, just to that point, is a chair for sale is a seat. Doesn't mean they're serving in that chair. And I think we're talking about serving, how many people are we willing to have served by how many employees? That's, that's my focus. If we said you can't have any more areas that you can sit down than, than you can serve, then that impedes our ability to sell things you can sit on. You know what I mean? I think it's different than a banquet situation in a cafe where it's basically set up for everyone to sit in all that area, unless told otherwise. But that's, that's how I'm looking at it.
And that's why the furniture concerns me, is I certainly don't want a situation where we say you can have sixty patrons and we walk in there and there are ten extra chairs because they're quote "for sale." That does concern me because of their retail mix. I mean, I really, I want to do this, I think it's an excellent compromise. I just continue to have questions about that.
What I would say to that is I think it's been quite clear to the applicant that if they're in violation of their, I'll call it headcount, there are serious ramifications for that, and I don't think they're going to go there. If they do, if they want to try to exceed their capacity, there are serious repercussions. And if there are seats that are empty in there, they need to be paying attention to how many bodies are in their business. Because it does matter. I don't like to put a number on how many people could go into a business, because I want it to be successful. But we have certain conditions on this particular property where there are limited parking spaces for employees and patrons, and it's a shared space with another business. And so I think there are some unique circumstances that I feel more, it's more appropriate to limit the number of people that are being served and are serving on in this particular case.
Thank you.
So any further discussion on the motion that's on the floor? So there is a motion and a second, and so let's go ahead to a vote. Is that still up, or do we have to redo it?
We have to redo it.
It's still up.
We're just waiting for the window.
Did anything happen?
This is not an intentional added drama moment right now.
Did that work? We're starting voting.
Okay.
No. Let me refresh. Okay, refreshing, if it, it should be up.
Okay.
Okay, so could you please vote? So that passes, the motion passes three to. So that passes, the motion passes three to two, so also, can we hear Nathan, so that does pass, can we hear when this would take effect? So there's no question if the applicant leaves and they wanna know, can we do this tomorrow, or do they need to wait until something happens?
Seeing as the date is November twentieth, twenty eighteen, they would need to comply with the condition that was just set forth, but as long as they do that, they could start tomorrow.
So outdoor service, well, it's supposed to ring.
Well, no outdoor, because it's November.
No, because we're in November, that's right.
So, but they can serve forty-five indoors, which is their business practice right now, but what this has done is now they are not to be, they are not permitted to pour in the front patio anymore until March.
Correct. Yes, that was the compromise.
Correct.
Okay, so that's the result, probably okay, not great, maybe terrible, but better than nothing, that's up to you guys to figure out. I think it was, I appreciate the extensive consideration and dialogue and the fact that we frankly worked hard to find something that would be a positive outcome, hopefully you feel that way. So, that's that. Now we'll move on to our next public hearing. Which is?
Yes.
Hold on just a second, I got a item eight B, RH Gallery, and Mason Reed Design Review and Sign Permit.
Yes, Mayor and council members, in the absence of the Planning and Building Director, I'll be presenting this item this evening. Before you tonight is a draft of a resolution affecting the council's direction to staff at the last meeting, there was also a public hearing on this item on November sixth. The resolution before you tonight does two things. First, it approves design review for the fence gate, trellis drapes and signs at Mason Reed, and makes the required findings on the municipal code for doing so. Secondly, it denies design review for the outdoor fireplace at Mason Reed and the knee-high walls and planters at both properties, and makes findings on the municipal code to deny that as well. It also imposes conditions of approval on the design review, including that all prior resolutions are incorporated by reference. The trellis drapes shall be maintained as fixed panels, so they cannot be closed. The three-foot sliding gate at entry to Mason Reed Garden shall remain in open position during all hours of operation. The gates may only be closed at night after the business closes for the purpose of securing the site. And then, consistent with the approved employee parking management plan, the applicant shall submit a third-party payroll report each month, and then within one hundred and twenty days of the effective date of this resolution, if adopted this evening, that would be today, the fireplace at Mason Reed shall be reduced to a maximum height of ten feet, and the knee-walls, planters in front of the setback of both properties, Mason Reed and RH Gallery, shall be reduced to a maximum height of three feet. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that Nathan is out, he might have more detailed information on the background of the project, but I'm happy to answer questions on the resolution, findings and any conditions of approval you might have.
So a quick question about the three-foot maximum, as you just read, combination of concrete wall and hedge, just so there's clarity on the two different materials there.
So is that to clarify in the condition that the wall itself would be three?
That's what I'm asking you, that if, if adding the screening above that with the plant material constitutes the wall or not? I mean, the effect is the same, but the material is not.
Do you know, Joe, off the top of your head? My sense is probably not, but I'd have to go back and read the municipal code itself. Typically, natural growing things don't count towards fence heights and other wall heights, but it's gonna depend on how the municipal code reads, so I'll go back and read it really quick.
But...
Go ahead.
So, but according, ad hoc planted a bush, and we, and the town made them take it down to three feet, because that bush is a wall.
In which case, consistent with that interpretation in the municipal code, I would answer yes.
Okay, I just wanna be clear, because, okay.
But there was an exception made at formerly Piatti, now formerly Red, where there was a nine-foot solid wall that came down to a five-foot living fence, but it was still considered a screening slash wall, I mean, we treated it like a wall, even though it was, it's mostly plant material. That's why I'm trying to make sure that if we're talking about thirty-six inches, does that include the planted hedge on top of the concrete? And I think, maybe I could ask the council, we all are assuming it's all-inclusive.
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
So...
All right, yeah, I might...
Make sure that that's consistent with the ordinance, because I know that is in question.
I might, I might mod, I might suggest then modifying condition five B to say the knee-walls slash planters in parentheses, including plant material.
Good.
And therefore, makes, just makes it clear, and this, to the extent this modifies the municipal code, that's permissible as a use permit, so.
So, I would also direct you to, which attachment is this? The frontage elevation attachment that was submitted by the applicant, that they are calculating thirty-six inches of concrete, I'm looking at the southern portion of the main RH Building One.
Yep.
Their calculation shows thirty-six inches of, of concrete wall, thirteen of whatever the black, I don't know that that's...
That looks like a metal planter, I believe.
Metal and then twelve inches of greenery, so that's where the total, I think, Councilmember Dorman talked about the fifty-one inches. And, and if you look at the other side of that rendering, twenty inches of walls less, thirteen and twelve.
That's sixty-one inches.
Well, that's forty-five, if you're by the, the main entrance to RH in Building One. Are we, are we all?
Yes, I'm looking at that right now.
Okay. So I just wanna make sure we're all talking about the same thing. So, you were asking, I'm sorry, I interrupted where you were.
No, I would just recommend then to be clear, in condition five B, to modify the current language to say the knee-walls slash planters, and then in parentheses, including plant material in the front setback on both properties shall be reduced to a maximum height of three feet, to make it clear to the applicant and the council's intent.
And you're going to try to make sure that, I mean, if there is language that clearly states that, because I know we also deal with residential fences, when it's six feet, you can add a foot, as long as it's not solid, that it's lattice, would this be the same thing where three feet of solid and then additional of non-solid?
Well, I guess what I would add is, even if the municipal code varies that requirement, through this process, you can place a condition that's more stringent.
Got it. So I think the council, I know, because I mean, we just confirmed that.
I would just like to say, pardon me, Mayor, if you apply the ad hoc condition, it was, that was thirty-six inch, I believe was the total height, I don't believe you allowed an excess above that.
Right. Okay, so Gary, did you have any more to present?
Nope.
Okay, questions of Gary, sounds like an after-school special.
We'll do the present.
Any questions?
Not for Gary.
Okay, wow, I wasn't ready for that.
I know.
Look at your sheet. Okay, in that case, I'll open the public hearing. I wanna recognize, before I forget, that we did receive a voicemail correspondence from Terry Hall, a resident of Burgundy Commons next door, who was opposed to the height of the fireplace. We also received an email at the very last minute before the meeting from Rick Burnall and Kathleen Espinoza, and I can't even remember what the total content was there. I believe they were generally opposed to the fireplace.
Height.
I'll go back and double-check that I'm not missing something from there, but there was an email sent late by them also, so with that, I had mentioned the voicemail already, yeah. So with that, the public hearing is open, I invite our applicant's representative, who's now, it's gone from two down to just you.
Yes, good evening.
Welcome back.
Town councillor, Town Council Mayor Dunbar, Stuart Wagner with RH. Yeah, normally I'm seated, Jordan Brown is not here tonight, nor others, so I get the pleasure of being here. Well, thank you for considering the other improvements at Maisory, the drapes, the signage and the low-wall gate. We've been working with the architect on the knee-wall, just taking a closer study. I don't have any alternatives for you, and I wasn't able to get that to Sandra, we're still looking at that area. In talking with them, the architect and Jordan, I mean, really wanted to express, we didn't try and pull a fast one, design intent was there, and we, and they put it in the plans, and it did go through plan check about ten times, that's what they're telling me, we're trying to do a fast one here. That said, we're, we're looking at alternatives and we'll come back with some sort of design review application within that hundred and twenty days. Speaking of that, we feel that's a good timeframe for us to look at things and hopefully come back with a different idea, so we would hope that recommend, or that condition stays on this resolution, and I believe that's all I had to say, I can answer any questions you might have, gonna keep it short.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for being here to represent the team. Councilmember Dorman?
Thank you, so I do have a question for you, Mr. Wagner. When we were here last time on this, we talked about February fifteenth, which is ninety days, and I know you can do it in ninety days, can't you?
We, we could get together and, and, and look at it closer and quicker.
Thank you.
So the proposal is one hundred and twenty from staff, but you had mentioned, I think, in the last conversation, ninety, okay. Any other comments either for the applicant? Any members of the public that want to comment? Seeing none, I guess this public hearing is gonna go a little faster than the last one. I'll go ahead and close the hearing and entertain discussion. Who would like to start this time, or am I gonna have to pick someone again? Councilmember Durham?
All my comments are the same exact as the last meeting.
It's all the same.
I, I'm not being snarky, it's, it's exactly what we put together. I would, though, like to hear Councilmember Dorman's further elaboration on her question, if there's some concern about time, but everything else exactly to, to every single piece of paper in here is exactly the same as last time, and I stand by everything I stated last time.
The only difference being the potential proposal to go from a hundred and twenty days as staff suggests to ninety, or something else. Councilwoman Dorman, can you maybe elaborate on that?
Sure. When I had talked to Planning Director Liston about this, she had originally said that ten days were sufficient to do the knee-walls, so when I brought that up at the last meeting, we talked about February fifteenth as being a reasonable time, I mean, they already have plans done for the ten-foot fireplace, they built it eighteen feet at their peril, so that should not be an issue. The knee-walls, as I understand it, the planter boxes were added after the walls were constructed, so it should not be difficult. This project as a whole has dragged on and on, and so I'm thinking, if they're not going to come back to, I mean, I'm thinking ninety days is a sufficient time to do what needs to be done to come into compliance. And then I had a couple of other comments on the resolution itself, but that's my thinking on the ninety days.
Thank you. I did wanna mention also that I'm, as I'm looking at the email from Terry Hall, in addition to the concern about the fireplace, there was a concern about the height of the, the knee-walls and the exit from Burgundy Commons, that there's a blind spot based on the height of the wall, and that she referenced a desire to have the mirror returned that used to be a reflective option for, for vehicles as they exit Burgundy Commons. Just to throw that out there, it's not part of the resolution as it states tonight, so. Either Vice Mayor or Councilmember Mueller, any comments?
No, I think it's exactly what we asked staff to bring back, and they did that, so...
Okay, Vice Mayor?
I agree, the height of the fireplace, although we had entertained the idea of saying, well, you've just got to take it out, but I'm glad that we can agree that if you bring it into compliance with the height limitations, we can live with it, and the knee-walls, and I, I'm delighted.
Thank you, and I agree that nothing really has changed to what, the reason I wanted us to have another public hearing is to give you an opportunity to present new ideas, if you could get them in, in a couple of weeks, realize that was a kind of a long shot for you. I'm comfortable with a hundred and twenty days, I absolutely understand Councilmember Dorman's point, this is four years and counting, and now I'm just trying to figure out, is February better than March? We're in the winter season, it can be a little bit challenging to be doing outdoor construction, but again, you've worked through four winters already, so I'm open to either of those, those numbers. I was willing to forgive the, the fireplace height, we've heard a little bit more pushback from residents of Burgundy Commons than we had heard previously, so I'm a little less willing to allow that. What I would be open to hearing is, is there a significant difference, yes, you should have complied with our ten-foot, I think it's ten-foot eight, or is it ten feet? If that creates a catastrophic situation with the fireplace, that eleven or twelve feet might avoid, I suggest that you bring that to staff for consideration, but you're hearing from everyone up here that we're talking about ten feet and the knee-walls width, including the planters, no more, no higher than thirty-six inches, so I agree that we haven't really changed off that position at that point. So is there any further conversation? Councilmember Dorman?
Yes, I had two other comments on the resolution, one is on the first page and one is on the third page in E and F, and it talks about the findings either can or cannot be made, says the, they are designed and located in a manner that will best satisfy the following criteria. I've talked to the town attorney about this, I would suggest that we, out of both E and F, remove best satisfy, because that's really not our value judgment, either it satisfies it or it doesn't, and it doesn't do any violence to what we're trying to say, it doesn't change our decision, but I don't, I would suggest we remove best, and Attorney Bell has said that was fine. And then I know we spent some time discussing the fixed panel draperies, which is under I two, the trellis drapes shall be maintained as fixed panels, so they cannot be closed. They are tied back right now, so they can't be closed, but they certainly can be unleashed and then become a thirty-four foot, a thirty-four, thirty-four inch panel. So I also talked to the attorney about if it would be possible or appropriate to say they shall be maintained tied back, so that they don't then open to give that three feet of privacy all the way down the line. But other than that, I think it's exactly as we discussed last time.
I think we made it clear that they were not to be extended, and they also made it clear they had no intent of extending them, so if you had specific language that satisfies that intent, it's better than closed, Gary. I mean, they can't be extended, or they can't, they must remain tied back.
Yeah, so...
That was the intent of our, our comments.
So I think including the language and she'll, shall be maintained tied back probably satisfies that to the end of that condition, if the council's all right with the current language, it's already there.
If you wanna make a motion with those...
Yes, thank you.
Language changes?
I would.
Welcome that.
I move that we adopt Resolution Number eighteen dash three-five-two-five approving design review for trellis drapes and a three-foot tall fence and gate at Maison Re, denying design review for an eighteen-foot tall fireplace at Maison Re and knee-walls and planters in the front setback at both Maison Re and RH that exceed a height of three feet, approving sign permit for three business identification signs at Maison Re for properties located at six-seven-one-one and six-seven-two-five Washington Street with the following changes to the resolution as presented. On E and F, rather than saying will best satisfy, just simply say will satisfy or will not satisfy, on one hundred and twenty days, change that to ninety, and on the trellis draperies, change to the language set out by the town attorney in the meeting. And on the trellis draperies, change to the language set out by the town attorney in the meeting.
Michelle, is that clear enough, or do you need that language?
I want the clarification for I-2. Are you adding "tied back" to the back of the sentence, or is it replacing fixed panels?
Yeah, I think that the proposed language was to add "and shall be maintained tied back" to the end of that sentence, I-2.
Oh, "and."
And then in Condition 5B, after the word "planters" in parentheses, the words "including plant material." I think that was it.
Thank you.
I think, though, Mr. Bell, if we add it to the end of I-2, so that they cannot be closed and tied back, I think it probably should be "shall be maintained as fixed panels tied back so that they cannot be closed."
Okay. I think the proposed language was, if I can just read it from the back, so you can... "The trellis drapes shall be maintained as fixed panels so that they cannot be closed and shall be maintained tied back."
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Yes, perfect.
So you're satisfied with that language?
Yes, thank you.
So do we have a button pushed on that? There is a motion on the floor. Not seeing him. Nothing yet. So now, somebody pushed the button. So there's a motion by Councilmember Dorman. There's a second by somebody. Or the button went away. Who's... Is there a second on this?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Councilmember Moller. So there's a motion and a second. We may need to voice vote, or Michelle?
Yeah, we do.
Okay, so all in favor of the motion with the edited conditions as presented?
Aye.
All in favor? Any opposed? So that's unanimous, 5-0. Thank you. And thank you for being here. Okay, administrative item, municipal code amendment regarding park regulations.
Good evening. So before you tonight is an introduction and a request to waive the first reading of an ordinance change number 18-479, which would add a section to the current municipal code, Section 12.12, which is the code regarding park regulations. And so the impetus to this was with the renovation and reopening of Vineyard Park. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission reviewed those current ordinances and made some suggestions regarding timing. And so currently, our parks are... All of our parks, our ordinance applies to all of them across the board, states our hours as sunrise to sunset. And so upon reviewing that, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission felt like it was more appropriate, especially for Vineyard Park where there are those courts and racket sports, potential play, that we analyze that, because sunrise racket play might not be appropriate in that neighborhood. So after discussing that with our town attorney, he did make a suggestion to go ahead and, before changing that ordinance, to make it a little easier on us as staff and the council to make changes to our town parks and recreation regulations. And so his suggestion was for the... This ordinance is to present to... So that town staff can bring changes to park regulations to you by resolution instead of an ordinance change. And there are a couple of reasons for that and why it would be easier for us as staff to manage it, and most likely for council as well, is that a park ordinance update, obviously you have a first, a second reading, and then adoption 30 days after the second reading. With a resolution, you are able to approve that, and the change becomes effective immediately. So that's a benefit. It also allows us by resolution to apply those changes to just certain areas or certain parks, whereas the ordinance does not allow that currently. And so this item before you tonight is allowing us to make those changes, bring back the second reading, and then effect that 30 days after, which if we move forward as it's slated, would be January 4th. And then at the next council meeting, we would bring back resolutions for those formal changes to the park hours at Vineyard Park. Right now, that's the only change we're looking at making, and there is an informal agreement with those player groups to not start playing until 8:00 a.m., so it hasn't really been an issue. But as word gets out, and we have people traveling to Yountville, potentially from other cities using those courts, we want to make sure that we're able to uphold and have our sheriff's department be able to enforce any of those regulations, and so they have to be posted as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
What was the January...
Gary's here, too.
The January 4th date was what?
Oh, so if you introduce and waive the reading, it will come back at the next meeting for the second reading.
It'll be December 4th rather than January 4th.
I'm sorry.
There is no...
That's okay. There's no January...
January 4th is a Friday. That's what I was getting confused with.
Oh, that would be the effective date of the new ordinance. Yes.
We would see this again at our next meeting.
On December 4th, and then it would be effective 30 days later, which would be January 4th.
Okay. Any questions on the staff report? Councilmember Durham?
A comment. The ordinance, sorry, B reads, "Copies or signage displaying the regulations described in subsection A shall be posted at each town park," and then it goes on. I would like to ask, we keep the signage to a minimum? And at best, that we add to something that's already there and not add additional signage?
Absolutely. So our goal, and we've worked on this over the years, is that we will keep that at a minimum. Most parks have the one main sign attached to the restroom, and that won't change, with the exception of at the sports courts where they will be posted on the gate, but that's it.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Dorman?
And how big do the signs have to be, and what do they have to say? Do they just say municipal code number, or do they have to set out the exact language of the resolution, or what?
Gary can answer that.
Yeah, no problem. The ordinance doesn't specify. I mean, the point of the copies and the signage is to give notice to anyone using the park or that area, what the requirements are. Typically, there's some shorthand in a sign, things like, you know, "closed at dusk," these types of things. Certainly, the town could include as much information up to and including the entire resolution, which would be a copy of the regulation.
So currently, our approach is to pull out those items that we think are most relevant or issues that have come up in the past. We just actually revised last year all of our main park signs, you may have noticed. And so we pull out those items that we think are, like I said, most relevant, but it does list the entire municipal code number at the bottom, so that if other things are being... Other items are happening, that the sheriff's department and staff can also navigate that.
And we would only have to put up additional signage if we do something in an ordinance, in a resolution that varies from the municipal code. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any comment from questions for the public? No. Okay, here's your chance. Way to stick it out. Is there a motion to adopt or introduce and waive this reading?
I'd be happy to make that, since I live 27 steps from the pickleball court. I would like to make a motion that we introduce and waive the first reading of ordinance number 18-479, adding Section 12.12.310 of Chapter 12.12 of Title 12 to the Yountville Municipal Code Regarding Park Regulations.
Is there a second? I don't think the buttons are working anymore.
I pushed it, but it's not doing anything.
Okay. Oh, there we... Now we have a second button, Councilmember Moller, I think. Was that your second? Any further discussion? Please vote. We got three... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That's 5-0. Yeah, okay. We got through it. Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you, Samantha.
Okay. First staff informational report, capital improvement program update.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, member of the council. This evening, we have the first of our annual budget session, so this is a... Just to bring you up to date on what we're doing this year with the CIP and where we're at with the CIP. Next slide. So this is a little snapshot of the budget that was approved, $2.347 million. We have 20 of 27 projects underway on this list. It's about 74% of our projects in total. Next slide. First up is the stationary emergency generator that was budgeted for $150,000. It is in design right now. We expect it to go into construction in the spring of 2019. Post office exerex annex, the roofing replacement, budgeted for $250,000. Final costs are $220, savings of about 1.14%. This roof will last... Is expected to last 50 years. It's warranted for 35, and they'll inspect it for the first 30 years of the life of the product, so it's a nice addition.
The percentage, yeah, it's more than one.
No, I'm sorry. Yeah, it probably is a typo.
Eleven point four.
I'm sorry, 11.4. Pedestrian bridge from Oak Circle to Mission, PK003. So this is a Caltrans-funded project. We are doing the design and permitting using general funds as a part of the matching funds for this project. It is currently in design and permitting. We are also still trying to negotiate right-of-way with West America Bank, and that seems to be one of the constraints right now. We expect this to go to construction next summer, so June of 2020. Curb gutter and sidewalk replacement, SB 3019. So this is using our SB 1 funds. We get about $40,000 estimated from our SB 1 funds. It is... It has to have a separate account for auditing purposes, and we will be doing curb gutter and sidewalk on Yount Street to kind of support the paving job that'll be coming later this spring. The annual paving program. So this is MT 3019, the Measure T money, and GT 3019 are gas tax or HUTA funds. So we conservatively estimated our Measure T funds at about $430,000. It's... Now it looks like it's going to exceed that by a fair amount, somewhere in the neighborhood of $550,000. Gas tax is actually running a little bit less than this. But together, we're going to have somewhere in the neighborhood of $600,000. We expect the project to come in on budget, and we'll be going into... We'll be bringing this to council for permission to go out to bid in January. We'll ask for a ward in February, and we expect to go under construction by contract in April, no later than April of 2019. So we have several programs that are ongoing, as opposed to the projects that we've just been recently discussing. So we did an... We have our ADA Accessibility Improvement Program. That's budgeted for $100,000 annually. We replaced the tactile domes at the post office. So those are the gray, formerly concrete tiles that were, to be honest, a maintenance nightmare. They were constantly kind of breaking and falling apart. They weren't very stable. They had been replaced in whole about, I think, two years before I got here, so five or six, no more than seven years ago. We replaced them with a fiberglass piece that you are more familiar with in handicap ramps. It should have a 20-year life expectancy. We got that done for $35,200. We're continuing to work on our GIS program, Myville, Asella, some hardware upgrades, and we continue to have a relationship with Rancho Cucamonga, although we're not nearly as dependent on their help, since we have... They've helped us train our staff, and for the most part, we operate independent from them. They do support us with Myville for sure, and a couple of the more complex operations we could use on GIS. Townwide drainage improvements. We haven't used that yet. However, we are looking at doing a little bit of design work out here on the corner of Fennell and Yount, where it typically floods. It's just a bad design, so we're going to do some improvements on that before we go into paving here in the spring and try to get that problem remedied, rather than have that continue on after we put a nice new paving surface on. Streetlight replacement program. This has been ongoing for several years as well. We're in Oak Circle right now. We have about seven, six or seven streetlights left in Oak Circle. Oak Leaf Court has about six or seven streetlights that need to be replaced as well. They're the same type, those kind of telephone pole decorative lights that you see in that part of town. And then over in the Heritage Neighborhood, those streetlights are also scheduled for replacement. We currently have about 16 lights, fixtures, and poles up in the courtyard. We need about 20 to finish the project, so we think with this year's funding and partial next year's funding, we should have enough, and we're doing that project in-house. So it's taking a little bit longer than expected, but we are saving considerable amount of funds as opposed to contracting that out. Waste water treatment plant. So we have replaced the two pumps at the wastewater treatment plant. It was budgeted for $40,000, and we installed them, bought them and installed them, and I believe they attached skated to these as well, all for that $40,000 price tag. The sewer main replacement program. This is a two-part program, so we have the in-situ process that you are somewhat familiar with. We have described that on multiple occasions. We have a picture of it here. That roll of plastic material is tugged into the pipe while it's flowing. They plug up the pipe ends and heat up that plastic material. They expand it, and it hardens in place, and it lasts for up to 50 years. We're expecting to get at least 50 years worth of use out of this. You don't have to dig at all. It restores the integrity of the pipe. Along with this, we also have the INI, the infiltration and inflow program. So these two programs work hand in hand. $74,800 for the INI program, budgeted annually, $72,572 for the sewer main replacement. I think it's important to note that both of these programs are stipulated through our MPDES permit, which we negotiate every five years. The last go-around, they said that they would leave these two programs in place, allow us to budget them as planned, and review at the end of our five-year period after they were able to analyze how well we've done. I will say that we're reducing inflow and infiltration. We're replacing sewer line at a pretty fair clip, and I think that they're going to be very happy with the results, so I would expect that they're not going to have much in addition to what we're already doing, which will be good for us. Three-quarter ton truck replacement. We budgeted $50,000. Costs were $43,000, so that was an 11% savings. This truck is for the facilities group. We also were able to put a electric tailgate on the back, so it helps with loading the heavier loads we have onto the back of the truck and getting them on and off. It's a really nice addition to our fleet. Yount Street main and lateral replacement, a water job. This job went out to bid about a month ago. We closed the bid last Thursday. We're still analyzing results. I'm happy to say that the bid is on budget, and we expect to come back in December with the recommendation to award this job. It will go under construction in January. Should be done by late February or early March, which would then allow the paving program to start in early April, weather pending or permitting, and be done by the end of April or early May. So completely done with construction on Yount Street before the summer really gets underway. Washington Park main line assessment. As you are aware, this is a picture of that line that failed a few years ago. We're reviewing consultants right now. It is a specialty service, so we're trying to figure out who is the best group of people to help us figure out what exactly is going out in Washington Park and how we're going to be able to fix it so that this doesn't occur again, or it doesn't happen with any regularity. Also, as noted in our staff report, we underwent a reserve study. The purpose of the reserve study was to try to... It was a couple of different purposes, really. We were trying to... We were trying to make sure that we had all of the big items for replacement, which we mostly knew about, but also some of the smaller items, and we wanted to put a, a timeline to those and a cost. So, we enlisted the help of a, a company that does it for a, a living. They are mostly used with um HOAs. However, they also had some experience with uh public agencies. So, they were able to help us uh look at all of our uh facilities. They came up with a replacement number. Uh, what you see on the top line is our fund balance as of July one for uh the facilities replacement fund. The contribution for last year's budget was sixty-seven thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars. We're going to ask the council at the end of uh this year to have a five hundred thousand dollar contribution from uh some of the fund balance from the exa- from the uh funds that are remaining in um our finance budget. Our finance director's gonna give you that report in December. And then at that point, uh pending that contribution, our fund balance in uh June thirtieth of twenty nineteen will be uh close to a million dollars. So, the good news is the refer- reserve fund uh suggested we put in a hundred and five thousand a year uh which would be about uh two point three million over the twenty-year period. The contribution uh is gonna be met with that five hundred thousand dollar uh addition and it will fund it for at least the next five years. However, we're going to continue to try to put fifty to one hundred K uh into that budget annually, uh depending on available resources. Next slide. Fund eighty-two for fleet tools and replacement. Similar story, a little different number. Uh, the, the reserve fund uh suggests a hundred thousand dollars for this uh fund on an annual basis, about two million dollars over the twenty-year period. Uh, the contribution, again, uh the five hundred thousand dollar contribution from the fund balance uh that Director Ojeda is going to discuss uh the next, the, the next council meeting. Um, and the funding strategy, again, going forward, be fifty to one hundred thousand dollars depending on the budget. And we're also um continuing to refine our fleet needs. Um, I think it's also important to note that um our Measure T MOE included um an addition of a piece of equipment. We um had a long discussion about adding that piece of equipment with the NVTA uh staff. They um, they were very um, but they, they wanted us to include that piece of equipment. Uh, we then stipulated that if we did include that piece of equipment in our MOE, we'd, we'd be allowed to purchase pieces of equipment using M- uh Measure T funds. So, um going forward, some of our fleet purchases are gonna be uh o- augmented or offset by um the Measure T fund. So, um, that is definitely a kind of a win for us, I think, so. What's next? So, uh, we're gonna review, update and refine our twenty nineteen, twenty twenty CIP. We go to P-RAC uh in early January twenty nineteen. And then um in February or early March, we'll come before you all for our first budget workshop where we'll talk about what's coming up in nineteen twenty and also what's new to the uh CIP five-year budget. Uh, and then in late spring of twenty nineteen, we'll have our budget workshop number two where we'll talk about the overall budget, but CIP will be included in that as well. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions? No, thank you very much for that update. Legislative update. Gary, we've got to hear a lot from you today.
I know. All right, so this is a presentation, um clearly not an exhaustive discussion of everything the legislature's done this year. That's not something I could accomplish this evening and I wouldn't put you all through that. However, uh, part of what my office does every year is go through all of the different bills that the legislature's passed, determine which ones affect the town and then how those bills might um require amendments to the municipal code or policies or other practices of the town. And then we update staff and make recommendations. Um, so this year, presenting that to the council in addition to staff, and so. Next slide. Ah, fly-in. Okay, excellent. All right, so this is only from January one twenty eighteen to present. Legislature has a two-year session, but we're gonna focus on this year mostly because of when bills take effect, which is January one, after first reading and second and sometimes fifth or sixth readings in the legislature. Two thousand two hundred and twenty-three bills were, had a first reading and were introduced since January one. One thousand two hundred and seventeen cleared both houses, the Assembly and the Senate. One thousand sixteen of those were signed by the governor into law and take effect on January one and a whole five hundred and ninety-four of them affect local government operations. Um, as you can tell, the legislature has a lot of ideas about how things should be run at the local level and they are no short, not short of ideas on how to make that work. I'll focus only on these bills. I think they're the interesting ones, um at least at this stage. There's many others. These ones uh affect the day-to-day operations of the town and um likely be interesting for your uh discussion this evening. First one of the cannabis bills. So, there are four. Assembly Bill twenty twenty authorizes temporary event licenses for cannabis events at any venue. That has been approved by a local jurisdiction, including the town. Previously, this was only in fairgrounds, which are typically run by the county or district agricultural associations, which are actually state agencies that run local fairgrounds. So, now, the town, for example, could do a temporary license and allow an event um that's not in one of those locations should the town choose to do so. Second one is AB twenty-one sixty-four. Allows immediate imposition of administrative fines and penalties for health and safety or zoning violations from illegal cultivation of cannabis. As you probably know, the administrative enforcement, it, the state law requires for zoning and land use that the town first give a notice of violation before it imposes fines. That's true of all land use and zoning violations. This creates an exception, so if they're cultivating cannabis illegally, you can go straight to a fine now. Senate Bill twelve ninety-four creates state funding for local equity programs. For those of you following this, you probably know cities like Oakland have created incentives for people with uh previous criminal convictions for cannabis. San Francisco is now in the process of expunging all convictions for um cannabis-related uh offenses going back to, I think, the early seventies. So, this creates some funding at the local level to encourage that and also to um uh, to create a state policy to allow it. SB fourteen fifty-nine allows the state to issue provisional commercial cannabis licenses to businesses currently going through state and local licensing processes. Some of the applicants had complained that the state was moving a little slowly. The legislature responded to that and said, all right, let's give them the authority to grant a, a provisional license provided that it looks like everything's gonna be okay as it moves through the process. So, now, the state agencies, the Bureau of Cannabis Control, Food and Agriculture, can now issue these uh provisional licenses.
A quick question, Gary.
Sure.
Are they differentiating between county and uh city or town jurisdictions?
For which one?
For things like the last fourteen fifty-nine. If a city or the town is allowing cultivation and the county is not, as long as it's within the town limit or the city limits, that would be permissible.
That's right. So, the state still only issues licenses when it's allowed at the local level. So, I think that answers the question.
Yeah, I'm just differentiating local from county and city, but they're all, it's all considered local.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Next slide. All right, micro enterprise home kitchen operations. Uh, this has come through different iterations over the past few years. This is the most recent one. It allows an operation of a food facility out of a private home if permitted by the county of the town. And in this case, the town would create a permit process for that. It limits operations to fifty thousand dollars in gross annual sales or thirty meals per day and sixty meals per week. Other restrictions include no more than one full-time equivalent employee. Food must be prepared, cooked and served the same day. Food must be consumed onsite or delivered. No raw milk, no raw oysters and no more than thirty meals a day and sold directly to consumers. Must not be sold to wholesalers or retailers. The impact of the town is you can decide to create a permit process to allow this. And if you don't, the county may. So, this is an interesting state law. The county can permit this in town limits, even if the town does not. So, that's a little quirk there, something to note.
And to emphasize, they can eat on property.
Correct. They can eat on site. That's correct. Yes. So, we encourage, uh, should the town want to get involved in this, to work with the county to see if the county's going to implement a program and maybe have a dialogue early on about creating a permit system that the town can live with because the county may choose to adopt a system. And then if the count, the town were to adopt a concurrent system, someone might be able to pick and choose which permit system they were to go under. So, something to consider. AB twenty-one sixty-two, um supportive housing. So, this allows supportive housing, which is a defined term, as a use-by-right in multifamily and mixed-use zones. This would include the mixed-use residential zone here in town. Exempts these local funding of these projects from SEQA, prohibits additional or different development standards for supportive housing. So, you have to apply the same to them as anyone else. Um, supportive housing is defined as a home that has no limit on the length of stay, occupied by a target population, which is also defined to include those with disabilities, those who are homeless and those who are homeless youth. And the h- home must also be linked to onsite or offsite services for housing, improving health, maximizing the ability to live and work in the community. There's other requirements for the property itself. For example, it must be deed-restricted, affordable for fifty-five years. Hundred percent of the units must be lower income and twenty-five percent of those units must be set aside for the target population. So, there are some restrictions on um what the actual property must be used for, but provided those are met, it is a use-by-right in the mixed-use zones now. Next slide. AB twenty-nine thirteen, building permit expiration. Typically, building permits are good for six months. If you start using them, um you have to, you have to come in and get an extension. If you wanna keep uh building uh past those six months, if you haven't completed the project. One of the benefits of getting a permit and having it extended over time is you lock in all of the regulations that apply at the time the building permit is issued. And so, for example, as you probably know, the building code is updated every three years. Those standards can change. If you get a permit issued and keep extending it, you can in theory lock in earlier building code requirements that might, the town might change later on. If you don't use your building permit within six months, it expires. Um, and the building official can issue extensions up to a hundred and eighty days. This bill now makes all building permits effective for twelve months, not six months. All the other rules apply, but now when a building permit's issued, you have twelve months where you can sit on it before you start commencing work before it expires. And at the end of that twelve months, if you've commenced work, you can get extensions for up to six months at a time. Just extends the period of time. It increases the time that projects can lay dormant, obviously, and take to complete. Next bill, sidewalk vending. Uh, we've already drafted a memo on this and the town's current ordinance um likely could use some amendments to comply with this. The big takeaway is it decriminalizes sidewalk vending statewide. There are certain things that the town's ordinance can no longer do. That includes requiring vending only in specific parts of the right-of-way. Town can no longer prohibit vendors in a town park. Town can no longer require consent or approval of a non-governmental entity before vending and can no longer restrict vending to particular areas or, or to a total number permitted.
But.
Yes.
They still have to have a permit to operate a business in our town.
Correct. They still have to get a business license.
Yeah.
That's right. Yes. Yes.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I'll go by Tamale. Go on.
So, it does, uh, obviously, it limits the town's authority to regulate street vending and it can require an update to administrative practices in the ordinance. There are some, uh, we're going through staff right now and um proposed amendments are likely gonna come forward.
They don't need to be in the park. We can go to their house if needed.
That's right.
Street vending includes vehicles?
So, I, I, you know, I don't think it does. I think it is more like a cart that's on a sidewalk and that would be off-road, not in a street, is my understanding.
Truck or other type of?
Right. I think that's regulated separately. Yeah. Yeah. Residential water discontinuation of service. Um, as you probably know, the utility, the state utilities code has procedures for turning off water for non-payment of the bill. This expands on those requirements. That is not the only basis that the town can shut off water. There are other provisions in the municipal code that allow that under certain circumstances. But this clarifies and requires the town to adopt a policy or an ordinance for discontinuation of residential water service if you have more than two hundred connections, which the town does. Cannot shut off until the bill has been delinquent for at least sixty days. No shut-off if the customer submits certain declarations. And those declarations include that the shut-off is life-threatening or prevents a serious threat to health and safety. So, if there's a declaration of that extent, the water can't be shut off in any event. And it caps reconnection fees to fifty dollars if the person is two hundred percent or below the federal poverty line, which I believe is around, I think the federal poverty line is at fifteen or eighteen thousand now. So, if they're two hundred percent of that, um, the uh reconnection fee is capped. So, uh, this may require an update to the written policy um or an ordinance. Currently, the town's ordinance allows shut-off for non-payment, does not include a sixty-day requirement, does not have declarations that allow that process to stop. So, there are potentially amendments in the municipal code to comply with this new requirement. Swimming pools, public safety. The town does have a pools, I understand it. It requires all public pools to have a readily-available automated external defibrillator during pool operations and applies to public pools that provide lifeguarding services and charge a direct fee. This may also require training on how to use it. It has to be readily available, but it's unclear if that's now a requirement for the town to operate it or if that's just available for everyone to grab it off the wall and use it. I would hope so. Yes, I think so. All right, next one. Bidding thresholds. Um, every so many years, and it's been a little while, the thresholds for informal and formal bidding of public works projects are increased. There's a process for this. The state controller, there's actually a commission on uh the Public Construction Cost Accounting Act Commission that creates these procedures for how the town complies with these alternative bidding procedures. That commission submits a report to the state controller, who then approves it and then submits a report to the legislature, who then adopts the new bid threshold. That process has concluded. They did adopt the new thresholds. They take effect on January one. It used to be forty-five thousand and below was no contract and no bid. Forty-five to one seventy-five was informal and one seventy-five and above was formal bidding. Those amounts have now been increased to sixty thousand, sixty to two hundred for informal and two hundred above for formal. It's really to account for inflation and the fact that costs go up. And then two hundred and twelve, five hundred, if you are, if your estimate is under two hundred and you use informal, but all your bids come in up to two hundred and twelve, five hundred, you can still do informal without complying with formal if the council adopts a resolution by forfeit's vote. The town's current municipal code doesn't require an amendment because previous drafters of your code included a provision that said whenever the state increases the bid thresholds, our bid thresholds are increased. So, you guys are already okay on January one. This is just an update for background. You could update it to be clear, but that's not required. Joint powers agreements and pension liability. You'll probably remember a few meetings ago, you were asked to adopt a resolution that dissolved a JPA you were a member of and it was in response to this bill. The impetus for this bill was LA Works, which was a JPA down south that provided training for employees for various different agencies. Uh, it went defunct and the member agencies decided not to fund it and it stopped paying its CalPERS contributions. And there was no one left to pay the bill at the end and CalPERS didn't have any mechanism in state law to go after the member agencies. And so now, there's a lot of former employees that are suing CalPERS. There's a lot of litigation over this. And to address this possibility and to prevent this from ever happening in the future, all local governments who are members of JPAs are now jointly and severally liable for the pension liabilities of all employees of those JPAs. And so, that means that if a JPA is created that makes a new agency, which sometimes happens, not always, JPAs can be not creating a new agency, it can just be a cooperative agreement between agencies. But if they do create a new agency, that agency can contract with CalPERS just like the town does. And to the extent those PERS obligations are not paid, um, they're gonna come looking to the town, even if the town is a significantly smaller entity than the county or someone else who's a member of that JPA and the town would technically be on the hook for a hundred percent of those liabilities. So, there's some risk here and local agencies in the league really pushed hard to scale this back. One of the things um that uh they went back and forth on in this bill was its retroactivity. Current, the bill in its early form uh reached back very far indefinitely to everything that had ever happened. That's been scaled back a little bit. Um, but effective January one, if you're still in these JPAs. And so, for example, the town is a member of Parsac, that's an example. Also, RGS is another example where this could come up, so. Prohibition on grocery taxes. You'll probably remember, this is the deal that was cut to get the fee and tax fairness and accountability. Fee and Tax Fairness and Accountability Act off the ballot. And so this does prevent the town from taxing specific groceries. This was really targeted at preventing Bay Area cities from imposing taxes on soda, but it does apply to everything. So to the extent the town would be considering doing this, you're not allowed to do it. It does sunset, I believe, in twenty-twenty-four.
Twelve years.
Twelve years, yes. All right, so a little bit longer. At any rate, no taxing groceries on an individual basis. That's the takeaway. That's it.
May I ask you to please send us the, that presentation?
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I thought there were five-hundred-and-forty-two more.
How way do you want to go?
Thank you for that update. Yeah, there are a few of those, actually more than I was expecting, that have not been discussed with the League of California Cities, but I think it's about, how many can you handle? Talking about six-hundred is a little difficult for five-hundred cities. Okay, great, thank you. Council meeting reports, let's try to, in the interest of time here. City selection committee, Vice Mayor, you, you were there?
I attended on Tuesday, November thirteenth, and the outcome was that we unanimously reappointed Supervisor Alfredo Pedrosa to the MCE for a four-year term of office commencing February tenth, twenty-nineteen. He serves on there now, and he will continue. Also, we learned that the, that the Oversight Board of the Area Aging on, Agency on Aging, serving Napa and Solano Counties, is looking for appointed Napa County City Select, Selection Representatives in their respective lo, local elected officials. And we discussed it briefly at the meeting, and with the suggestion from Mayor Jill Tickle that American Canyon take this on since they are closer to Solano County, and that's where they will be meeting. And then I also attended right after that the Napa Flood Control and Water Conservation District. We had really only consent items that were about adoption of the twenty-nineteen meeting calendar for the Board of Directors, adoption of a resolution establishing a fiscal year twenty-eighteen-nineteen appropriations limit. District Engineer Authorization to sign certificates of acceptance to accept and record the grant of access easement deeds from the Gasser Foundation property at no cost for a portion of three different APNs. And then the, we also were asked to approve of and authorize for the chairperson to grant the following easements to Napa Sanitation District in exchange for property improvements and to sign the easement deeds. There are three properties, three different APNs. They are all in Napa. And finally, the approval and authorization of the chairperson to sign an agreement with Horizon Water and Environmental LLC for a maximum compensation of fifty-five thousand for November through June for an environmental review and permitting support related to the district's stream maintenance program.
Sorry, I missed that meeting.
It was exciting.
Thank you. Upper Valley Waste, is there anything to report?
Yes, we met yesterday. And we are updating a lot of things the, our board is doing. We're streamlining the number of meetings from currently around twelve down to six. Now we're going to have, talk about more stuff and meet less frequently. We're also making a lot of changes to our reports and documents that we have to review and approve. And a pretty exciting thing for all of us JPA members, especially for Yonville. We, the JPA has in twenty-eighteen excess of about five-hundred thousand to five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in funds we got from the tipping fees at the landfill, primarily from the Napa and Sonoma fire debris. So that, depending on how we, and the board approved to distribute all those funds to the individual jurisdictions within our JPA. So depend, we're going to work through that in January, so fingers crossed. I'm hoping Yonville's going to get about seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, is that it? Leave on a good note.
You want more?
No, leave on a good note. Money coming in.
Okay.
Good. League of California Cities Executive Board, I don't know that there are any policy committee updates that any of you would have, but there is a League Leaders and Board, Board of Directors meeting in Garden Grove next week. So I will be there for both of those. I think the Vice Mayor is also attending the League Leaders on behalf of the North Bay Division. I attended the California Economic Summit that was hosted primarily by California Forward. It's kind of a think tank advancing economic strategies. They have a platform that our incoming governor has been very supportive of, so we need to be paying attention. He's attended this for several years, did not attend this year because he was up dealing with the wildfire issues. But there's a platform of one million more homes, one million more skilled workers, one million more acre-feet of water, and one million more jobs. And their main focus is regional collaboration to achieve these goals. The interesting thing is the governor has already stated that he's seen, he wants to see three-and-a-half million homes during the next seven years. And so people are all sitting around scratching their heads about how that's going to happen. But you can, the next time Gary gives us some legislative update, you can bet there are going to be a long list of housing-related bills that are in the works. I also attended for five days the National League of Cities Convention down in, in Los Angeles. I was part of a mayor's learning exchange with about a dozen mayors from around the, around the country, talking about civic engagement and some best practices. In particular, I was touting our envisioned Yonville general plan process and how we engaged the community over the last year and a half. The workforce housing ballot measure that we just passed in five of the six jurisdictions to kind of self-help ourselves with workforce housing revenues. And then, of course, a lot of discussion in several sessions about natural disaster preparedness, recovery, whether it's wildfires for us, a lot of talk about flooding, tornadoes, hurricanes, that type of thing. There were a lot of sessions also about economic resilience, local energy projects. There was, what I was impressed by, a good focus on small cities. And what they really meant by small cities, typically from the League of California Cities, we're talking about a hundred thousand or fifty thousand. They were talking about five and ten thousand. So it really was more pertinent to us about how do you bring corporate investment to a very small community. Broadband is very much on the national landscape. And then it was interesting because in our general sessions, we had speakers that included Elon Musk, the Tesla founder, Maria Shriver, LA Mayor Eric Garcetti, and also of interest around here, Tim Sloan, who's the CEO of Wells Fargo Bank. And they all gave very interesting perspectives. There was a real appreciation that I was happy to see about small cities, and how one speaker talked about eighty percent of our population around the country live in cities under ten thousand population. So it's a reminder about, a lot of it happens small. Big things happen small. I also wanted to recognize everyone that helped make the tree lighting and town lighting celebration on Sunday, a great success. Samantha, who thankfully has gone home. Whitney McAvoy in the chamber, and the rest of our team that prepared the town. The lights went on, right as Santa said so, so that's always great. There was a holiday film up at the Lincoln Theater. Only about a hundred folks attended, but it's one of, I think, either three or four that are going to be shown for free up at the theater throughout the six days of holidays in Yonville. So a very good opportunity for families to get out and get in the holiday spirit. I wanted to recognize the Thanksgiving dinner. If you want to maybe share a little bit about that. I know you may not have any room left, but Councilmember Durham has been working quite hard on the community Thanksgiving dinner.
Thank you. We are very excited. We have a lot of good people participating in the wine train. Hotel Yonville, Bardessono, Hotel Velagio and Vintage House, as well as Model Bakery, as well as Bouchon Bakery. And then quite a few donations from other businesses, Southside Redwood as well. We have a hundred and twelve seats available. We have a hundred and thirteen seats reserved. So we have a lot of volunteers. We have about thirty volunteers as well. This is the first year that I've taken it on, and I'm very excited about it. And we are fully committed. And if you have any questions, do not hesitate to email me or call me, and I've posted it in next door Yonville as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I did want to recognize, I was in Los Angeles for that National League of Cities Conference. I was about thirty miles away from Thousand Oaks when that shooting incident happened, and recognized how this community and the broader Napa community really rallied behind the Houseley family. It was really impressive to hear about that and see that even in the, the media coverage down in LA. And then it continued, obviously, for several days. Our community really stepped up. Again, very impressive how we recognize when some of our family needs help. So thanks to everybody that helped bring that together. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn in memory of...
Sorry.
Oh, we have more.
Before you do that, there's one more report or announcement.
Okay.
Mainly because I want to keep Will here as long as we can. Just a clarification on our favorite item of the night, the Priest Ranch one. I just wanted to review one potentially unintended consequence, and I just needed clarification from the council if this was indeed the intent. Because it says a max of sixty patrons in the summer, the March first, October thirty-first, with no more than thirty patrons indoors. I want to make sure that was the intent. Let's say there's one really, really hot day where service outside wouldn't be appropriate. Is the intent of the council to still limit the indoor use to only thirty patrons during, say, a hundred-degree weather in July? I just wanted to bring that up before the meeting is closed.
Can we even discuss this now?
I think you can. If you did, the public hearing's closed, but you could, if you wanted to reconsider, do a motion for reconsideration from someone in the majority and make another motion to do this. I don't think you could do that. I think that these were concerns that were raised by the applicant. You might have noticed right after the council made his action. The second thing he raised, which I will clarify as well, is what if he just simply doesn't take advantage of this amended use permit? And he's not required to do so. So the new conditions would only take effect if he availed himself of what was granted, which is service on that back patio. If he chooses not to do so, he can still operate under the previously approved use permit. He asked for clarification on that, and I can confirm that's generally how that works.
Well, I would say to your second point, yes, that's true. He could, he could not choose to have the full service out in the courtyard and stay as is.
Which includes up to eight seats in the front patio year-round.
And unlimited seats inside theoretically.
Max of forty-five, according to what he said the fire marshal told him.
Yeah, but, okay, that's fine. It's not a capacity maximum. It's an evacuation maximum.
Yeah.
So, okay. So I think that's our intent, correct? That, or understanding that if he doesn't want to change his permit, that's up to, that's Mr. Becker's prerogative. And this is like, this all goes away in terms of his changing of the, the conditions. The other...
I think that, that's true from what, I'm sorry. That's true from what the attorney says, but in that eventuality, we have a permit out there where we've done something special for someone, and they are not taking advantage of it. So can we, if we were to reopen this, could we say, you need to tell us by a date certain whether you plan to take advantage, otherwise you're back where you are, and this permit is void?
Doesn't it already expire without action?
Yeah, I think the municipal code says if you don't take advantage of it within two years, it expires. That's typically the amount of time, but I think the municipal code has a period of time where if you don't, if the person does not avail themselves of the permitted use, the use permit automatically expires.
That was, that's two years, to my understanding. We've had that happen a couple of times.
Yeah.
As long as there's something.
There is something, yes.
Thank you.
I think it's state law that requires that, municipal code.
So then the question goes back to the intent as we stated and passed that resolution. Sixty total from March to October, up to thirty outside, and no more than thirty inside. Yes.
And a potential of this is to make that sixty just period, a max of sixty, whether that's indoor or outside. Well, indoor, you can set a limit of forty-three or whatever it is right now, forty-three.
Well, we did. I mean, we said forty-five inside because that was their capacity.
Right. So since that's what it is in the winter, perhaps we could do a max of sixty total with no more than forty-five indoors during the summer. So that might be a way to address his concern of what if it gets really, really hot?
I, I think the reason that we put a number, if I remember Councilmember Dorman's thinking about this, was it's kind of an enforcement issue. Now you're trying to, you're trying to enforce on a daily basis how hot is hot, and how many people are going to go inside if it's, if someone, who determines it's too hot to stay outside?
Right. And I, I don't think we would need to put in a condition that has it related to the temperature outside. It would just simply saying, instead of no more than thirty patrons of this number are permitted indoors, we just changed that number to forty-five to be consistent with what it is in the winter, but still noticing that sixty is the max for the overall total.
Councilmember Dorman?
Or maybe we do the inverse of that and say, no more than thirty patrons of this number are permitted outdoors during this time period. And then we limit the outdoor seats to thirty.
But that allows sixty inside.
No, sixty from March one to October thirty-one. No more than thirty of them can be outside.
Right, but if no, no one wants to go outside, they could have sixty inside.
Ah, you're right, sorry. Might be too late to think about this.
I know, I apologize for this. I just wanted to raise that.
One possible...
And this is just the request of the applicant who's not happy with the result.
Correct. And I'm only happy to provide this if the council is interested in hearing.
What were you going to say, Gary?
So I would just say, one way to possibly address this is to create a total cap for the number of seats indoor and outdoor, and then provide a lesser number for indoor and outdoor that totals... See if I'm saying this correctly. So say you say sixty total, no more than forty-five indoor at any given time, and then that additional fifteen can, and then no more than thirty outdoor. So you have ninety possible, but no more than sixty total, so that the seats can move between the two, depending on the... Do you see what I'm saying?
No, how do you get to ninety?
So, for example, no more than sixty seats total indoor and outdoor, but the maximum number in indoor and outdoor can be higher than that total, and they move the seats around to comply.
The intent of my motion was to limit the number of people on the property to sixty.
Right.
Not ninety.
Right, so you, you could do that. Maybe I'm just not explaining this correctly.
I don't care where they put the furniture. I care where the people are.
So, under what's written right there is my attempt of writing down what Gary just said. The max is sixty. You can't have more than sixty patrons on the site. Okay? If you want to put as many as you can indoors, well, you can't go over forty-five. If you want to go as many as you can outdoors, you can't go over thirty. The math is up to the applicant, whatever they want to do. It can't go over sixty.
That is what I was trying to get to.
But your language is to be served, and the, then you have to split up, serve full service table-side or serve two-ounce pours in the establishment.
I can add that. Yeah.
Councilmember Mueller?
So my suggestion is let's leave it as it is. They can come back in six months when we, right, under, even when the new ordinance that we had, the second reading tonight, can they come back in six months?
They can come back, well, it's not in effect yet, but yes.
Right, sorry. When it goes into effect.
Yes, when it goes into effect, they can come back six months after this approval this evening for another amendment should they wish to, and then after that, not for another year.
And they will have been through a summer, and let's see how it works for them. And they will have been through a summer, and let's see how it works for them.
Not in six months.
Oh, well, March.
So, let me try to understand the math, because I'm still not getting it. Sixty total, no more than forty-five of the sixty during the good weather months
Yeah.
can be served inside. And then no more of the remaining, so up to fifteen, if they use all forty-five
If they choose.
Inside, only up to fifteen could be outside. That's what you're saying.
Yeah, and then if they reduced inside down to thirty, they could move those fifteen outside, because there'd be no more than thirty outside. So there's just, they'd have to move the seats depending on they wanted to, with a maximum cap overall, and then a maximum cap indoor and a maximum cap outdoor, if the council's even interested.
So, the benefit to this is the business gets fifteen more seats inside during the summer?
Yes, and fifteen fewer outdoor.
But still, it's capped at sixty, which is what the intent was.
Right.
Right. And then forty-five indoor, only, no, again, I wanna make sure that we're not saying they can't have people outside during November to, to February.
Correct.
They just can't have the table service.
Yeah, all...
Whatever the language is, to make sure that that's the case.
Instead of it just saying to be served, I'll beef it up a little bit, so it's clear what that service is.
Okay. So, I'm comfortable with that new language, how do we do this?
And there's a motion for reconsideration by someone in the three-member majority.
I'll make a motion, do we, how do we do this, Michelle? We just gonna do a voice?
Yep.
Okay, I'll, uh, make a motion for reconsideration of the action on item eight A, Priest Ranch Use Permit Amendment.
And then if there's a second in a vote on that, then there can be an alternative motion.
I'll second it.
This is just the reconsideration motion.
Correct.
So there's a motion and a second to reconsider the action. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes? Any opposed? Abstaining?
But it's just the three who were...
No, I think we all...
The three who voted for it.
We all vote on the reconsideration.
You all can vote on the reconsideration, it's just who can make the motion.
So, I heard three, I did not, so all in favor of the reconsideration motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that passes three to two. Now, I will make that reconsidered motion, which is as the language states here. Is that enough? Michelle, does that work for you?
I'm gonna get it from Nathan.
Okay.
Yeah.
The language is in the record, as these conditions are here, so.
I'll second.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second, that's the reconsidered motion.
But it's not that exact language, it's
It'll include beef.
The import of that language will be properly put.
Yes, this is just presented in a way that I thought...
With the proper clarifications about table service and non-table service. Okay, with that, uh, motion and a second, all in favor of the reconsidered motion?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, so that passes again three to two with the same, three and the same two.
I think that's fair.
Okay. Yes, any other business? No, then I will entertain a motion, as I was starting to say, in memory of Elena Houseley and Dottie Ramos, who we lost, uh, very recently from our community. Is there such a motion? You make that motion?
Oh, I'm, I'm, I still move.
Okay. A second?
Second.
Uh, this is to, uh, adjourn until our next regular meeting of December fourth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that passes unanimously. Thanks, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving.